Good evening and welcome to the 28th meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the Planning Board and staff.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Sean Fahey, Member.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And staff, this evening, we have with us in person, Julia.
Julia Getman.
And Tim? Tim is in the process of joining us. And while we're waiting for him, we can introduce our peer-reviewed consultant, Sean Bearden. So, and Tim?
I feel like you're a member of the board sitting next to me.
Hi, sorry, I just stepped away for a moment.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No, it's just that you're here, so.
Everybody's, every board's different, every city's different.
We just lost you for a second, but Tim is with us. Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I'm here. I don't have my camera, so I'm just dealing with the laptop camera, so it's not as good. So I'm just going to bring it off.
Great, thank you for joining us, Tim. We can now move to our administrative items, approval of minutes. We have a set from March 7th, but that was an executive session, so.
No, 26 was an executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, so those are, this was not our executive session. Have you received minutes from the Select Board on that?
Okay.
On that, okay, so we'll have to go.
We share both ways.
So we'll go into executive session. Did you want to take a look at those, the Select Board's minutes?
Yes, did you send those to us, Julia, the Select Board's version?
I'm not sure, I thought Lynn might have done that, but I'll send them to you.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing those, but I did review the ones that you prepared, I just wanted to take a look for comparison before we vote on those.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't, in all of the documents I've been reviewing, I didn't review the minutes that are in this folder, so I'll review those for our next meeting.
Okay, so that was the 28th only, or was that the March 14th?
We have the 7th that I did review and had comments on, but then the other two that are in the folder that I haven't reviewed, or the 14th and 20th?
Perfect, I didn't see edits on those. Okay, great.
The 4th has Cheryl's edits in them.
Right, okay, all right. Has everyone had a chance to review March 7th?
Uh huh.
And, so do you feel comfortable going ahead and voting?
Yes, with the 7th, uh huh.
And the 14th?
The 14th, I haven't reviewed, I'd like a chance to review those.
Oh, sorry, I meant to say the 7th.
The 7th, that's okay, just to make sure we're on the same page. So, if I can have a motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, March 7th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. The minutes are approved and will defer the 14th and the 28th. Okay, great. And then, we have a discussion for our next meeting dates. We currently have had to reschedule, and I apologize for this, moving our Planning Board meeting, which was scheduled for the 25th, will now be moved to the 24th. And I think everybody was good with that, including Tim, and I spoke with Ned and his team, and they seemed good with that. The question is, after tonight, if our board will feel like we want to add an additional meeting, we'll be hearing to, but we can, I think, just determine that later. So at this time, our next formal meeting will be on April 24th.
Cool.
Okay, great. Month is flying by, all right. And then, we now can go to our, to Tim, Director of Planning and Community Development, for your update.
No update right now, I've actually been out of the office a couple days, I've got a full inbox to go through, so I'll only have quite a bit of update next meeting.
All right. Super terrific, thank you. So at this time, we can now invite, open our citizens' speak and any members from the public who would like to join us this evening, please feel free to come forward and state your name, and if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand if there's anything on Zoom you would like to say, please. And there will be opportunity during the public forum to speak if members of the public need to as well. Tim, are you seeing any hands up?
I am not.
Okay, great. So, we are within our time, so we can now open the public hearing. Reopen 7, at 111 Highland Street, special permit continued from March 28th, 2024. And welcome the team.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board, thank you. Ned Corcoran, on behalf of Northridge Communities LLC. And I think, a couple of things I think we'd like to do this evening, one is, I think we have, we've submitted some final plans over the weekend, one of the things that we did do was we submitted the full record set of plans, so that would be a complete record set, and we think that was an appropriate thing to do, understanding that the stormwater issues are still under review by DEP and will be for some time. I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So we did submit a record set of plans for the, so we think we have a complete set of plans. Included with that was a site entry, renderings showing a new design for the site entry that you probably want to review, and some modifications to the lighting plans as well. And I can have Rebecca and Sashi, our landscape architect and architect, quickly walk through those, if you'd like. The other thing we'd like to do, I think, which is important, is Chris Heavy is here to speak, and Tony Chikello are here to speak, really to the process, and to where we are and where we need to get to. I think it's important that we close on all of the informational issues tonight, that we began reviewing the special permit. I would recommend a meeting next week if we thought that that was necessary to go through the special permit, but we need to close this hearing, we need to vote of this board before the end of April. I've made that clear for the last couple of meetings, it is absolutely crystal clear, and we're ready, we're ready to close, and we'll see what the outcome. But with that, I would, I would hand it to Chris Heavy and Tony Chikello and ask them to come up and speak.
Welcome.
Good evening, thank you.
Absolutely. Yes.
So, if I could start, my name's Tony Chikello, as most of you know, I'm a longtime town meeting member from precinct four, and I'm Board Chair at BID Milton. Probably 25 years ago, BID Milton purchased a property at Highland Street for hospital operations use. Over the years, we've heard a lot about what people did and did not want the site to be used for, potential concerns about hospital use of the property and crossing the road with hospital operations. Nine years ago, the town adopted its master plan, and the master plan specifically recommended for that site that the town should encourage Milton Hospital to pursue a past proposal to develop the assisted living, an assisted living facility on hospital-owned property located across the street from the medical institution and adjacent to senior housing. Nearly four years ago, the hospital trustees made a decision to figure out what we were going to do with the property. It lay fallow for 25 years, and we really needed to do something. We looked at a variety of alternatives, including hospital use. I, among others, was not a big fan of that, in part because I thought it would engender a lot of opposition from the community, and I thought we could probably do better with our core operations on the hospital site, and then, and at other sites like Lower Mills or other places that we have had folks. In any event, we put out an RFP and got various responses. We seriously considered half a dozen of them. At the end of the day, after a long process, we selected an assisted living operator. It was, I will have you know, not the highest bidder, not by, not close. This was not a monetary decision primarily, although certainly, as fiduciaries of the hospital, we have an obligation to maintain the financial health of the institution, which frankly has become pretty hard over the last few years. We looked at a variety of opportunities, we took the provider that was going to have a much more reasonable number of units proposed on the site, the lowest, the lowest number of units proposed on the site. We looked at an operator with the track record of, as a quality provider, a good neighbor, and a good community member, a Massachusetts operator, not a national affiliate, a national operation. We made our selection with Northbridge because we thought that they were the partner that the community needed for a use that the community needed. Three years ago now, we were at town meeting. Before we came to town meeting, we came to this board and got unanimous approval for a zoning change to facilitate the AL, the assisted living project on the site. Two years, two and a half years ago, this process started for a special permit, maybe a year and a half, I don't know, it's been a long time. All throughout this process, there have been substantial concessions to try to make the project be what the community needs, be a viable project, and to work. There's been a lot of work spent, a lot of time spent on addressing environmental and other issues with the Conservation Commission. There were serious concerns about some, some of what the neighbors saw as more troublesome aspects of the project, the location of the trash, where the generator was going to be, those things, those issues were addressed. People asked for concessions on size. As I mentioned, the other projects we were looking at were much more substantial on the site, that people wanted to develop. In any case, this, this project, as I understand, has been tightened up a bit, not as much as people want, but it's at a point that it works and it's viable. There have been substantial efforts to work with the neighbors from day one, and the community members, to fit the project into the site in a way that is unobtrusive and as good a fit as possible, and I think we've got a quality project and proposal that's in front of you now. I really want to thank all of you that have been involved. I know, this board has spent a lot of time looking at this project, and I appreciate your efforts, I appreciate your questions. I've been involved in a lot of projects over time, and when the boards get involved, when neighbors get involved, they push to make the project better. So, to the extent that neighbors have pushed to make the project better, and this board has pushed to make the project better, I think that's a great thing. So thank you to all of those. You know, we, we end up, we don't always agree with everyone involved, but the approach that I try to take is not to be disagreeable and disagreeing. We get to the best concession that we, that we make. At the end of the day, we're, we're neighbors with this project, we're neighbors with all of our neighbors around the site, and we're trying to work with folks as best we can. I thank the developer, in this case, Northbridge, for all the hard work they've done to try to make this a project that it's going to be, and I think we're going to hold them accountable to making this the real, really the project that the community needs. This is, this is an assisted living, a memory care project that just, it's, it's a resource that doesn't exist in our community, we need it. At this point, the time is now. You, you have the project in front of you that the town requested nine years ago, you have a quality operator, you've got a quality plan, you've got substantial mitigation for the issues, and I'd ask you to vote yes, and let's get this project built, because hopefully, I don't need it too soon, but I might, thank you.
Welcome, Chris.
So my name's Chris Heavy, is this on? Looks green. I'm a lifelong resident here in Milton, I'm a former board member of the hospital, I retired after the board of, from the hospital after about 16, 17 years, it seemed like a long time. I'm also currently the Chair of Fuller Village. Coming down to this room, it reminds me about 10 years of being on the Audit Committee, spending time down here, so I know what it's like to serve, so thank you for the time that you put into doing this, I totally appreciate it and understand it. From, we don't offer this service at Fuller, right, we, there's a large community there of seniors, but we don't have the ability to offer memory care. We're lucky to have the hospital in town, I think we'd be lucky to have a memory care facility in town. Even, folks that aren't at Fuller, we all have parents, we have neighbors who, you know, memory issues hit, could hit anyone. My mom lived in town, she had to leave because there was no memory care in town, so she had to go to Brookline, and it doesn't sound that far, but I remember one Thanksgiving where I spent maybe three and a half hours on the road, there's nobody on the road, but just going there, getting her out of the facility, bringing her to my house, and then bringing her back, and it's just, having it in town is so much better. But I'd also say, from the Planning Board's perspective, like, should we be planning? What's the plan? What are we going to do with this space? Something is going to happen to this space. The hospital is, you know, looking to do something with it and put, you know, some capital back into their facility, so what's the good use of this space? So if we say no to this, what are we saying yes to? What are the other options? Yeah, there's some things that aren't all, you know, standing with trees and stuff is not economical, putting in a few homes probably isn't all that economical, so what are we really saying yes to if we say no to this project? Thank you.
Great, thank you. At this time, do we want to ask questions while we have this group here? Do we want to hear from the public? Where would you like to begin as a board? Because we will have, obviously, to get into some.
I do, I do have a question. Tony, it's for you, given what you outlined as a timeframe and the time that we've been reviewing this project, what's your, have, do you have, are, is this buyer under contract? And are you to a point where that's running up to the end of that contract in terms of timing? So that the, when we've heard that this needs to end by the end of April, that there's actual, a deadline between the parties that we need to be cognizant of?
Well, you know, to be perfectly blunt, we, you know, there's an election coming up in town, and, you know, this is, this is an issue that requires a four-fifth vote, and we'd love to get five out of five. We think the project merits that. But, you know, I think we're, we're at the, I can't tell from the, from the developer's standpoint, but I think we're at the point where the rubber hits the road. I think we need approval of this project. I can't speak for what's going to happen if we don't get approval of this. This is, you know, it's not the hospital's project, but we have, you know, we're working with this developer, and, you know, we've been, we've invested a lot of time, effort, and energy because we think it's really a plan that makes sense and it works, and it works for the whole community, I think.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hey, Tony, how are you? Nice to see you. So I think at this point, many of the folks in the audience tonight have been here for every meeting, and I, it's not our responsibility to count the number of hours that go into a hearing, our responsibility is to conduct all of the hearings that should be had, so every applicant is properly heard. But I do have a couple of, a couple of questions in response to your comments. So, you, your comment is concessions have been made to the neighbors, another comment is size has been reduced. I think I'm familiar with the size reduction, we talked about it in here, it's a 2,000-square-foot size reduction that took place two meetings ago or three meetings ago. That reduction, and we had some back and forth on this, not with you, of course, but with the applicant's team, it was a new space, sunrooms, that the facility doesn't benefit from. So, I guess what I'd like to understand from your perspective, and this is for the residents, the folks that are your neighbors, you say that substantial mitigation of the issues has, has taken place? I'd like you to tell me what those, what is, in your mind, the substantial mitigation of the issues?
I, well, again, I haven't been involved in all of the discussions with the neighbors, as I think those have been primarily with developers.
Yeah.
But my understanding is that there have been, there, from the outset, there was a lot of discussion with the direct buttters to the property about how to situate the building in a way to minimize the visual and other impact to the neighbors. As I mentioned, I know that there was an effort to move the trash receptacles and bins, to move the generator, and I know that throughout, there's been efforts to make sure that the environmental and other issues on the site have been addressed. Those are some of the things that I know that have been done.
And I, you know, I'm not going to speak for the neighbors, they're going to speak for themselves. Moving where the trash is and moving the generator, I think the neighbors would say that they appreciate it, but the, the issues that have been strongly presented by the neighbors, that they're concerned with, is water and traffic. So although what you just mentioned are changes that have been made, you know, position of generator, position of trash, and yes, I think there's been efforts made to screen, you know, the, the building for the neighbor, the Bacardi neighbor to the left, you know, certainly that's been plenty of discussion about what's been, what's been done to afford screening over there, but I guess my question is, if we're going to say that substantial mitigation of the issues, you know, there's been no mitigation, you know, other than saying we're going to go to the DEP for approval, make sure your stormwater design complies, but there's been requests over and over again for reduction of the size of the building, and we're consistently hearing no. So if it's substantial mitigation of the issues, I guess it's my opinion that they're not substantial, whatever changes have been made, I would say they're de minimis, you know, they're not affecting the size of the facility. You know, when we look at what Ned Corcoran had given to us, the facility is identically the same size as what the, what was passed in town meeting. No more than 70 units and 78 beds in the development as it is now. Ned's description of compliance is the development shall have 78 beds with 70 units, exactly the same. So no concession in size at all. So I guess, you know, I'd like to just understand, is that a proper term to say that substantial mitigation has taken place? Given what the neighbors' concerns have been?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I think there was a lot of discussion and negotiation and work on this from the outset, and it was a lot of opportunity for just, this, this special permit process wasn't the beginning of the process, it began long before that. We went to town meeting and had a process where the town meeting approved what could be built on the site, and this, what's being built on the site is certainly consistent with that. And, you know, I'm not a hydrologist, nor are the neighbors, but the folks that have looked at the water issues that they've raised have been satisfied that they've been addressed. And so, I think that, you know, there's, there's not much I can say about that issue. The traffic issue is not an issue that's, it's, it's an ongoing issue, we, we know that it is an issue. We've heard some of the neighbors' concerns about truck traffic and the like, and at the hospital, we have tried and will continue to try to do what we can to direct the traffic that's related to the hospital site to the extent that we can. We have a limited ability to control where an ambulance goes. We can try to control where trucks go, we have, you know, a limited ability to do that. I think certainly we can continue to work with the town and others to try to do what we can to control the traffic issues, but the traffic issues really are endemic to life in Milton. You know, the, the traffic from the facility itself, as I understand it, is not substantial and won't in any substantial way, as I understand it, affect the traffic in the neighborhood.
I guess we'll, we'll all have our own definition of what substantial mitigation is, you'll have yours, you know, I guess I can have mine, and the neighbors can have theirs. But I will, I will tell you my opinion, I don't think that's an accurate description of what's taken place during the meetings that I've been present for. I don't think it's been substantial mitigation. I think there's been some attention to some of the issues that have come up, but I definitely wouldn't call it substantial mitigation.
Yeah, just to follow, yeah, to follow up on that, so I was at a town meeting back on March 14th, 2022, and I have to disclose I voted no for this, because the neighbors called me up and asked me to vote no. And I went back to revisit twice, I re-watched that town meeting twice, because I wanted to make sure that what I remembered was correct. And the proposal at town meeting was, quote, "not a cakewalk, this is one step, this is just one step, this is just zoning." The Planning Board supported the zoning, but not the project. Ned reported at town meeting there will be robust setbacks, all which has to be approved by Planning Board. Traffic, especially low, there'll be shift changes by employees, occasional deliveries, There was testimony that there would be 150 trips per day from staff to the site, and I believe you spoke at town meeting and you said, and I quote, "150 cars per day, those numbers are vastly exaggerated." And then when you go and we get the traffic report from Van S., your own traffic, I think it's 288?
244 cars, 144 vehicles.
100, yeah, but.
But that's.
Two.
But that representation was 150 vehicles per day.
And, so I think throughout town meeting, because I listened to it twice, town meeting members were reassured that this is still a very long process before Concom and before Planning Board. Another town meeting member said, "This is just zoning. Planning Board will look at stormwater, traffic study, looking at the latter streets and Highland Street." A question was asked, would Planning Board have A question was asked, "Would planning board have authority to make changes to the project?" She was reassured that we would. Again, the chair of the select board at the time said, "We're just talking about zoning." Still goes through the process. Many opportunities to hear all the issues. Again, you said Milton is a processed town. There's many opportunities for this to be heard. There's a Milton way, very specific to zoning. So my frustration lies in that the sales pitch to town meeting was not delivered on our end here. Because every time we asked for, you know, "Can we revisit the size?", the answer was, "It's non-negotiable. It's non-negotiable." So how come when at town meeting, when it got support at town meeting, there was going to be ample opportunity for negotiation? But in reality, it didn't happen. So I appreciate, I really appreciate all the effort and expense and time that the applicant has put in, but it's just really disappointing because I've been through it myself. I've been through the bylaw process twice. I've been through this special permit process twice. And I did not add one building. I did not take down one tree. My impact to my neighborhood was zero change. And I met with my neighbors consistently to negotiate. And that's why I'm frustrated with this, that that didn't happen. And Milton Hospital is a very good neighbor, and we're very lucky to have a hospital in town, very lucky. I'm there all the time. But I just don't think that the hospital has done enough to negotiate with the neighbors.
So this is not the hospital's.
Correct. Right, but it's your property.
It is our property. And we went through a process with a developer, and developer is taking it through this process. We support this project. We think it's appropriate to the site. We think it works on the site. We think it's critically, critically needed in town. Chris Heavey's mom is not the only person that has to leave town to get memory care services.
And I understand that. My mother just passed away two weeks ago.
I know, and I'm sorry.
And she had dementia, and we kept her at home. I fully understand the need. I don't need my heartstrings played upon at the moment. I totally understand the need. But we're not discussing the need, we're just discussing the size of the project.
Size of the project is directly proportional to the need that it can address. You know, I mean, there, there's a lot about an assisted living facility, a memory care facility, that is dictated by regulation and practicality. And you, you've dealt with all of this, right? The adjacent outdoor spaces where people can be, et cetera. It makes it a lot more complicated to try to site a building in there and make it work.
Tony, I think, I think what you just said, I totally understand that in terms of size of facility is correlating to the size of services we can provide, obviously. One less bed in there, there's one less family in Milton that has an opportunity to have a family member in there. I totally get it. I guess the challenge, for me anyway, is finding a balance between the concerns of the neighbors, the people that have invested in their homes, the concern they have, they obviously have current issues with water, right? Anybody who spends any time over there, I happen to walk on Spafford with my wife quite a bit, and everybody's pumping water, especially over the course of the last few weeks. So, yeah, I get it. You know, if there's a concession made in terms of size of the building, there's obviously going to be less beds, and the community will suffer as a result for that. So I get it, you know? Again, having heard from the residents, you know, that live right around it for hours upon hours upon hours, those are the two issues that they've brought forth. The size of the facility and their concern for that size of facility and how their conditions with water will continue to get worse and traffic. And I'm not going to, I'm not going to waste any time debating whether there is or isn't traffic there right now. There is. You know, you know, I think one of the, and this is an area where there might be an opportunity here for this transaction to improve the traffic conditions on Spafford, and the hospital definitely will have to be a participant in that. So that's what we hear constantly from the neighbors. Nobody's been before us arguing that the town doesn't need memory care. No one has. I think any neighbor that has, has sat at the table and presented their point of view, they all have an appreciation for what this could mean for the town. So everybody appreciates that. But the two issues, you know, that have been probably the greatest issues in terms of, you know, the impact to the neighbors have been the traffic and water. So when I asked the question on substantial mitigation, Tony, you know, from all the conversations we've had, as Maggie said, zero concession on size of building, zero.
Can I say?
Yes.
Quick question. So to Sean's point, I mean, traffic and water are the two things that I hear over and over again. And existing traffic is an issue on the ladder streets. So we're trying to put protocols in place so that the impact from the memory clinic directs traffic down towards Canton Ave. And I think it will help, but the existing problem, I think a lot of it comes from the hospital. So the question is, would the hospital be willing to put the same protocols in place? I mean, there was even talk about closing the Highland Ave exit, and I understand that you can't close it to ambulances. But I think this would be a great opportunity for the hospital to come forward and say, "Hey, you know, we can stop traffic on the ladder streets by only, by mandating or encouraging our employees to use the Reevesville Road entrance exclusively." Would the hospital be open to that? Or can, how much influence do you have with them?
So I have not studied the hospital's circulation plans enough.
Okay.
To know what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. I can say that, you know, I've heard the neighbors throughout this process, and I'm committed to try to do what we can to make that better. So that's a discussion that needs to continue. And it really needs to, and whether we need to work and commit to do that with, you know, with the traffic commission involving them as well, I think that that, whatever we can do to make those areas work better, I think makes sense. And the hospital, I can commit to work with the hospital and the neighbors on those issues, and I'm happy to continue to do that. I will say, I do it a lot less now, but, I mean, long before I was on the hospital board, whenever I'm going over to Cunningham Park, whatever, I lived down on Houston Avenue, I'd drive up there and I usually cut down one of the ladder streets. That's, that was the way that I always went. You know, you avoid all the lights, and now there's more stop signs than there used to be. But, you know, that's, that's sort of the nature of the beast if you're traveling in that direction, and I think that people tend to just do that. I think we do have to look at what mitigation measures we can, we can do. And I have heard complaints about truck traffic, and I think that we need to continue to try to work on that.
Well, the neighbors have put together presentation after presentation with pictures of air gas trucks and all sorts of hospital-related vehicles going up their streets. So I know when I own Bent's, I would mandate small trucks, I would mandate delivery times, usually in the morning, early, early in the morning. The point is, it can be done. It's kind of a pain in the butt for the hospital, but I definitely think it can be done. And I'd like to see it start now to make sure it gets done as part of this approval process. That's my biggest concern, is that it's not just lip service that actually gets done. Because the ladder streets are suffering a lot of traffic, and I think a good amount of it does come from the hospital. And I'm guilty of cutting down, cutting down Highland just like you are. Yeah, they can lobby for speed bumps and do other things, but I think if the hospital does its part, it would make this thing a lot more palatable for the neighborhood.
I think we need to look at it. I don't think it's a process that can be done in the time we have available to do You know, the traffic commission, when you go in front of them, if you're a citizen, you want something, there's nothing more frustrating than that because their default answer is, "No way."
And I'm not talking about the traffic commission.
There's a lot of reasons why they say, "No way." But at the same time, there are, you know, if you study the issue and deal with it, you can usually, you can often come up with better compromise. I think this is a process that we need to work, to engage in with the neighbors, and I'll commit to work in, work with the neighbors on that. And you know where to find me.
Yeah, I think after this thing gets approved, I'm not going to find you.
I'm not going anywhere.
I know. I, I think it should be tied to this approval somehow, is what I'm saying. My concern.
The, the opportunity with traffic, Tony, from my perspective, emergency traffic is going to do what emergency traffic needs to do, right? Whether that's an ambulance or a resident bringing someone who needs care to the hospital, that's, that's going to happen. The, the traffic that's within the control of the hospital, from my perspective, is the business traffic. You know, that's it. You know, that's, that's the only ask. I don't think, you know, the business traffic, possibly the employees to keep them off the ladder street, that might be a really good concession for the neighbors. The neighbors all realize that if an ambulance has to get to the hospital, they're going the fastest way they possibly can get there. And if a person has a, has a patient in the car in need, they're going to do the same thing. So I don't think the ask is for that traffic. The ask is the business traffic. I honestly can't tell you how many times a truck goes up Spafford. I agree with what Jim said. We've seen photos, you know, evidence of trucks that are linen suppliers that are on the street, and as you said.
The air gas, the medical deliveries.
Truck on the street. The neighbors could tell you how often, you know, Bard is here, he's a spokesperson for the neighbors, he's spoken hours and hours and hours here. They might have a better idea of how frequently it is. We couldn't tell you that. None of us know that. I couldn't tell you if, if a linen truck is up there once a day, what, 10 times a week? I have no idea. But I think the one concession that the hospital could make is to keep the business traffic and possibly their employee traffic, you know, off of the ladder streets. That's about the only concession I think you have control over. The only one. And as Jim said, you know, getting the hospital to, to become responsible to do that after this concludes, what's the mechanism for that? I'm not, I'm not confident that there is a mechanism for it. So.
I'm here and I'm not going away. The hospital's here and we're not going away.
And with all due respect, you're the chair of the board. You're not Rich Fernandez, right? I mean, he's the operator of the hospital, you're the chair of the board. So it's the one that would make the commitment that we feel would be, that I feel would be one that'd have to be followed, is the operator of the hospital. So that's my perspective.
And the second thing is, oh, I'm sorry, are you going to speak?
No, I'm sorry, finish.
Just say the second thing that I've heard a lot about is water coming off your back parking lot and hitting the backyards of the Spafford Road residence.
Coming where?
Your parking lot in the back of your building, where that little storage shed is, kind of backs up to Spafford.
At the hospital.
At the hospital. Not your house, at the hospital, right?
Okay.
So anyway, the point is.
So.
Point is that if there could be some kind of mitigation, if we can, if we can show that water's running off your property and attributing to the Spafford Road water problem, if there'd be a way to mitigate that somehow, or study it, or, I know the memory clinic has done a great job of putting a, an underground stormwater management system in a giant causeway, so it definitely can be done.
So the hospital is not party to this special permit application? So.
Yeah, I understand that.
We're certainly willing to talk to neighbors about concerns about traffic, and we're certainly willing to talk to neighbor about, neighbors about water concerns that you've raised that I haven't heard from any of the neighbors before.
Interesting, okay.
So if they want to raise, that's a completely different issue, as far as I understand, than the water issues that they've been raising on the site across the street.
Okay.
Do they, unless they think they're somehow related, I haven't heard that.
I've sworn that it was raised that the back parking lot water runs off into Spafford. I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything. I'm just wondering if during this approval process, if we could somehow tie in.
No.
Looking at that.
No is the answer.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm happy to have a discussion with neighbors about concerns that they have.
Okay.
But that's not part of this process.
Tony, I agree, I agree with you, and I understand it's not part of the process. I think what Jim was, what we've been hearing from the neighbors is their concern of an accumulation of effect, right? And we don't even know this for, we just, we're just telling you what we've heard from the neighbors, right? They have some frustration that their backyards of properties, Ned's been here, you've heard it, have been impacted over time by, in their view, development on the hospital property. So of course, you know, if they have that already and they're contemplating what could happen with the development of the construction of a memory care clinic, again, it's just the accumulation over time of the impact to the property. That's, that's the point. That's what's been discussed, yeah.
I have no further questions for these gentlemen. I think some of what's been commented on is really part of deliberations. And what the comment, one other comment that I would make is, there's our responsibility to review the application, to see that it's compliant with the zoning, and to find that the development will serve, and I'll read this, "Upon a finding that the development will serve the public good and provide significant public benefit without significant unmitigated detrimental impacts." So that's our job, to take into consideration everything that's been presented to us by the applicant, the comments that we've heard from the public, the expert testimony that we've received from our peer review consultants, and then do our deliberations and make a decision. So I think we're going, we're, we're being asked to go to that step, and I think it's appropriate that we're being asked to. So I would like, though, to, to hear a little bit more. I think Ned mentioned at the beginning, I would like to hear from the landscape architect a little bit more.
Because I think we have a lot of still, yes, questions, and that's part of.
Yes.
What we're looking at all this. I don't want to step in and interrupt, but I, I think what, what I'm hearing, without speaking for anyone, is, and what we've heard from the neighbors is, the neighbors want to work with the hospital. We want this to be the best plan it can possibly be. And I think the hospital would like for it to be the best plan that it could possibly be. The issue that I keep running into and the barriers of, can we actually make this project the best it can be, comes, comes down to the size of the project because of the constraints of the wetlands. And we've heard, you know, we've heard a lot about the water, the stormwater management systems that were not redeliberating that, but there was never a hydrologist, hydrologist who was evaluated at this site. So I will be tying some sort of language with your help in how we, how we make sure that there's a verifiable certified hydrologist who looks at this. But not getting ahead on that, you know, when I think about the amount of fill that has to come onto the site, which I'm not even sure if the conservation commission was aware of the height of the retaining walls and how much fill was being brought into this site, we can address that later. But it's the amount of trees that are being removed, which we understand, Ned has been very honest and said, "You know what? There's a lot of trees coming down on this site." The problem is, because the size of the project, which granted, is within the permit, which is allowable, you know, within the setbacks, the problem is, those walls, because of the topography, are right on those wetlands. So the, the, the construction of the, of the walls and the materials is determined not to, you know, to have the least detrimental effect to, to the site. But it's, but it's limited in what can be done that could be improved because it is literally right on, on the wetland site. It limits the landscape that, that I think all of us would like to see, more buffering for the neighbors provided to the, to the, to Highland Street. It's, it's almost impossible because you can't, you're not allowed to plant in the wetlands. So the size of the project is actually impacting the quality of the project, and that it could have more landscaping. And I think that, you know, the landscape team, Northbridge has done, you know, just, they're, they have a wonderful reputation, and they've really been, you know, I think they've listened, but they're limited in what they can do with that, with the size of the project as well. You know, I could go on and on, you know, with this, around the landscape plan, the screening. And when I, but I do look back at what is in the special permit and the language, you know, it talks about designs in, under number 10, site design standards. The existing terrain shall be preserved as reasonably as possible. reasonably as possible, providing that earth moving and retaining walls may be employed when reasonably necessary. This is, this is extreme and I do know that there are other sites that only have one story. They don't have a basement level at all and are about the same square footage. The majority of, of Northbridge's facilities are 62 units and 70 beds. One, two, three, four. The only, Newburyport is the only one. So I think I just haven't, I haven't heard the justification of why that number of units won't work on the site, because I feel like the planning board wants to work with the hospital, the neighbors wanna work with the hospital, but it's, the, the reality is that, is the size that is, that just seems to be an overly burden, burdensome to this particular site because of the wetlands that are on this site. It's, it's, and it's, it's in a residential neighborhood. So we are being more sensitive in Northbridge. A lot of their facilities, they are able to buffer, they're able to landscape, they're on main roads, they're on, you know, busier inner, you know, busier roadways with commercial around. This is really in a residential neighborhood and it's bigger almost than, than, almost nearly all of the other facilities. So that is where I would like to say, I would like to give it approval. I would like to get this done and I would like to see this done in a way that, that I, I don't wanna run up development costs for the, for Northbridge. I don't want the hospital. I would love to move this along quickly. I would love to, for Northbridge to, to be able to look and, and come back with a plan that we can, I'll call it an extra meeting, you know, I, I don't wanna, whatever we need to do to get this done, but I, I think the size is what is causing most of the challenges of, and, and concerns that we've had. The cut in the fill, which you, I know, worked on the layout and I just, you know, I do look at the special permit and I, I think there's some impacts here. The, you know, one of the, creation of an attractive initial view from the existing streets and neighborhood properties in harmony with the neighborhood shall be, shall be an objective of overall site design. And I just, I'm having a hard time and Ned has, you know, taken back at the, doing some stone pillars, you know, making more of an entryway, some stone, and I greatly appreciate that and I, some of the things that they've listened to, but it's really the buffering and giving that sense of privacy that neighbors who are really, Highland Street's a, a very narrow roadway, that they are not looking right, you know, at the delivery trucks that are coming in. And, you know, one of the things, we, we did move the, the generator and the dumpsters to the back, but there's still a service delivery area in the front, which with that, with that reduction of size, that service delivery area could also be moved to the back. So your, Northbridge is constrained because of the size of the project themselves. I would love to help them make it a better project. Let this be an example of what an exemplar project can look like for Northbridge. They have a wonderful reputation, but I think Milton could be the finest and something that they can be really proud of to model for others. But, but without a, I think without a reduction in size, it's just not gonna be to that level. Okay.
So I think I need to ask a very important question.
Yep.
Because the size is the size. I've said this all along. We negotiated the size when we came through the planning board three years ago and we got to town meeting. There were no promises made by this team that would be a further reduction coming through this process. This project is as tight as it can be and we need a vote up or down on this project. I think it's very important that the planning board think from a planning perspective, what comes next. Because the hospital needs to monetize this site. You've heard from them that this is the least impactful, lowest cost or, or lower cost alternative to what was submitted. If this goes back out, and I've heard from two developers who have heard from brokers on behalf of the Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center in the city of Boston, that they're concerned that this isn't gonna pass and they wanna know what's next. I can tell you what's next. It's, it's nothing that's gonna come through zoning. It's not gonna be a three, not gonna be three single family house lots. They don't pay, they don't pay the cost across the wetlands. And it's not gonna be something else that's gonna take another year to zone and two years to go through another special permit process. It's gonna be a process that, a project that bypasses all of that and it's gonna be much more significant. We've solved the wetlands. You can put four stories on this footprint and not change the storm water implications at all. I'm afraid that that would happen. I do never, I never, ever threaten alternatives. In three years, I've never suggested it and I wouldn't because I'm convinced that this is the right project. It's the best right project for this location, but you, you need to consider your vote. You're voting yes for something. You're not voting no for anything. And I think this is the right outcome and I would urge you to, to work with us on the language of the bylaw to set conditions that are effective. But I would urge you not to vote no.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And we are up against it. August 30th is our deadline.
So again, going back to town meeting, a town meeting member did ask, you know, why is the hospital threatening the town with the 40B? So why isn't the hospital working with the neighbors? So I guess my frustration is really with the hospital. The hospital has been a very good neighbor. All these years, very good neighbor. There's always been a working relationship with Milton Hospital. They, they, they hired local businesses. My family benefited from that when I was growing up. My father had the, the snowplow contract to Milton Hospital. They've always been very good neighbors. So I would think that Milton Hospital does not wanna go down the road of not being a good neighbor to the town of Milton. And I have concerns about, about what could happen even if it gets built by Northbridge. So it's been stated that the income from property tax would be $275,000. The next door neighbor has an assessed value of their house of over $5 million. They, their taxes are close to $55,000 a year. And here we are having a 60,000 square foot building, 25 feet away. So how is that going to affect that assessed value of that $5 million home? My guess is we're gonna lose some taxes off that residential house and we're probably gonna lose some property taxes from the whole neighborhood and we really won't know that till years down the road. Because there's a thing called external obsolescence, a depreciation of value. There's a chance that property values will be affected. Also, Milton Hospital contributes nothing to a pilot program. Yes, the medical office building pays close to $175,000, but also I'm understanding that, that Milton Hospital is looking for an abatement of another, like, close to $32,000, which is being reviewed now. So Milton Hospital is no longer just Milton Hospital. Now it's BI. And I understand the impact of BI, but I really hope that BI will be a good neighbor to the town of Milton. And we're, we're all reading and listening to the news about Stewart Healthcare. You know, that's a scary thought. And, you know, Stewart Healthcare sold off the property. So there's an investment company owning the, the real estate and then there's the operators of the hospitals. How do we even know that's going to not happen to BI? So we as a town are being very good neighbors and very, and we wanna embrace BI and Milton Hospital, but it's kind of a scary thing right now. And I know you guys aren't really involved in the project, but you're our neighbors. We grew up with you. So you're, you're the face of Milton Hospital because no one else is.
Can I respond?
Yes.
So, you know, Chris grew up here, I didn't.
Yeah.
I've only been here 29 years, so I'm a newbie, I get it. But, you know, BID Milton is your neighbor and will be your neighbor. There's a lot of things I could say about the whole Stewart system debacle people. That was, you know, private equity play to suck out $800 million in cash. You know, BI LH is a nonprofit hospital system. The money from this project stays here. We are tremendous beneficiaries of being part of this system. You know, everybody in this community's been touched the last four years by health issues, health crises, that kind of thing. And the fact that BID Milton was able to be the resource it was to the community was in part because it's got the resources of an extensive network. With that said, it's a brutal time for everybody in healthcare to try to make things work. The economics of healthcare have always been crazy and, and in some ways nonsensical. They've gotten more challenging, but we're going nowhere. You know, 10 years ago, if somebody would've said, or 15, 20 years ago, there's three hospitals, you could throw a rock and hit Quincy Hospital, Carney and Milton. I don't think people would've predicted that Milton would be the star of the show that survived. But in fact, Quincy Hospital's gone and Carney Hospital is challenged. Milton is challenged because we're too busy. You, we've, you know, we're serving a lot of people and we're a critical resource for the town and we're trying to do what we can. We, we're not making any threats, but we need to do what we, we need to invest in our facility so we can serve this town. We need, we're, we do not plan to build hospital space or a medical office building on that site. We could've tried to do that. I didn't think it was a good idea. We all decided it was not a good idea. Wouldn't be being the community members that we are and need to be. BID Milton is a critical resource for this community. We need to make sure that we can be the healthcare facility that we as a town and beyond need. And if we've got water problems with our neighbor, we're gonna work on them. We're not in it for the short term. What can we promise you today so we can get what we want and run away? We're here. Traffic issues unfortunately are not going away and neither are efforts to try to work with the neighbors. I understand people are frustrated and that, you know, Bart is in the back. We'll talk. We will get this, we'll, we'll address these problems as best we can. Milton, BID Milton is your neighbor. We're not scary. I may look scary on my worst days, but I, I, we're here to stay. At the same time, we can't control the project and we can't control what works or doesn't work for Northbridge. We have an arrangement with them, but, but that doesn't allow us to dictate what they can or can't do or what will or won't work. There was a lot of time spent in round one to, to try to skinny the zoning down to make it work and be a slimmer project. That, I know that's appalling to the neighbors because when I saw what people were proposing on here, which was much more substantial than this, I couldn't believe it. But, but I think this is a project that can really work. It's amazing if you talk to the people in other communities where Northbridge facilities are. You know, there are people who'll tell you, I was storming the Bastille to try to stop this thing. It got built after, you know, delay, delay, delay. It situates right in the community. People don't even notice it. I, I'm not saying it's not a substantial building in the area, but it's an important, important resource. And the thing that I've seen about Northbridge and their history is, they don't go away. They're neighbors and they work with the communities and it's amazing how satisfied the communities that they worked with have been. So I know there are a lot of concerns about this. We're not going away in terms of addressing the issues that the hospital can and will address. I don't think they're part of this special permit process, but they are part of our work in the community. We don't thrive as a hospital unless the community's behind us. I can't do it. We need this community to be around us if we're gonna be what, the facility that people need. I'm sorry, I'm pontificating now.
That's okay. I had a couple, just a couple of points. A couple of additional points. If I end up a resident of this facility and you end up a resident of this facility, neither one of us will remember this conversation, so we'll still get along great. But, you know, I know it's probably not an intention and I know you haven't, you haven't indicated the threat, but the threat has been made by both Ned and by Chris of the alternative if this doesn't get approved. There isn't a member of the board here that doesn't realize that there are four alternatives. So we, you know, one is obviously residential, another is to leave it just as it is and nothing gets developed, right? The third is your project, you know, the, the Northbridge project, and the fourth is a 40B. We don't need either Chris nor Ned to tell us what the alternative is. We get it. I guess, the second thing in terms of the size, I also am a town meeting member. I was there for the town meeting vote, you know, and I happen to vote in support of it. Back at the time where the size of the project was envisioned, right, the size of the facility, Ned, and you've said that the size of the facility has been unchanged. So that goes back, how far back does the size of the facility, and I'm talking about rooms and beds. That's really what the size means to me.
When we first started meeting with neighbors in May, almost a full year before the, we got to the town meeting.
So that's almost three years ago.
Yeah. We're three, we're three years into a very public process.
So, so here's my point and this is why that's important. At that time, you never could've understood, understood all the constraints of the site. What Meredith said earlier is, is absolutely right. The quality of the project and the points that she made earlier are impacted by the size of the facility. I suspect that there's a business deal that was made for a sale price of this land, which was a calculation of how many beds, how many rooms could be built up there, right? And, you know, as this project was designed, the constraints began to be recognized. And while they were recognized, no matter what they were, whether they were water, traffic, soil conditions, you know, how much fill needed to be brought onto the site, there was an ardent determination to hold the number of beds and the number of rooms, even though back when those were all thought of three years ago, you never could've understood the limitations of the site. You couldn't have.
We, we actually had a pretty good understanding.
You know what I've done for a long time. Come on.
No, we, Paul Avery.
What would you have designed, if you don't mind? What, what did you have designed at that time?
They went out and did a-
Had a full civil design?
No, they had a, but they did a whole lot of analysis of where the, we knew where the wetlands were. They had a pretty good sense of where this building needed to be.
Forty years building. You couldn't have three years ago unless you had a fully developed set of drawings, understood what your limitations were. My point is, you know, long before you designed it, you know, you had a size that you had determined is what you wanted the facility to be. And yet, as all these issues and limitations and challenges came, you know, came along through the course of design, you know, and quite honestly, you don't even have a buildable set of documents right now. You know, you, you have, you have a proposed design, but at some point in time, it is gonna become a buildable set of documents, but that is gonna evolve too. It's not a buildable set as it is. But what's never changed, you know, is the size of the facility. There's been an unwillingness to change, no matter what. No matter what. And, and I think there's something there that's a little unfair. You know, before you were even designed, you- You know, before you were even designed, you established what you wanted for rooms and beds. And all along the way, no matter what the issue was, you've tried to maintain that size of that facility. It may be part of the business deal with the hospital. You know, maybe that's how it's structured. If we can have this many beds, this is the price. Maybe you have to go back and revisit the price and give some relief in terms of size.
Sean, we're at the end. I hear you.
Yeah.
I hear all your comments. We're at the end. We can't do that.
Okay.
Could I add something real quick? Just, so it's just important for people to understand that if you reduce the number of beds, unlikely to make a substantive impact on the overall size of the facility. Most of your impervious surface is for access, roadways, things like that. Most of your trips are from deliveries in staff, which even with a reduced room count, probably not going to change. Stormwater, the solution is going to scale with the impervious surface. So I would just intuitively, you want to say, well, if we reduce the number of rooms, we're going to reduce the impact. In this particular case, because of the uniqueness of the situation, that's not likely to be the case. So you're probably going to see a 90% loss of reduction. You're really, if you lose five rooms, you're really only going to get 10% of that value back in site impacts. Because if you look at the site, it's all access roadways. It's how to get trucks in and out, how to get fire trucks in and out. Parking is relatively modest. You don't have a lot of sort of room-generated traffic. So you really won't see any substantive reduction, even though you've lost rooms.
Is that what you refer to as the uniqueness of this site?
I mean, it's more uniqueness of the use. I mean, this is a fairly, we don't see many uses that are this big that generate as little traffic because of the nature of the residents. And with the structural requirements, your staffing requirements, you don't have a sort of a correlative reduction in staff for, by bedroom. You sort of have a sort of a minimum need that has to be maintained. So I just wouldn't expect to see a whole lot of benefit unless you have a really large-scale reduction. And even that, you're still going to have to get trucks in and out. You're still going to have to get fire trucks in and out. That's where most of your impacts are coming from.
So if I could translate this into, you know, my thoughts, if you took 10% of the square footage of the building away in order to reduce, you know, rooms and beds, you're not going to change the roadway, you're not going to change the parking, you're not going to change the rotary, you're not going to change the service area to the building. Okay?
And that's the bulk of, that's the bulk of the impact.
You would make, I hear you. I understand that point. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
But it does, in comparison to the others, it looks like about 10,000 square feet less when you look at the-
I think one of the differences, it's a two-story, you know, structure, and many of your other facilities, Northbridge's other facilities are a single floor. And, you know, there's an inefficiency with two floors that, you know, I think you can accomplish things with a single floor that you cannot accomplish with two floors.
You certainly have different, I think the way you staff it on a two-story building is different than a one-story building.
Definitely.
And I'm sure there's a certain, the way they run their model. There's a certain number of rooms that staff handles. I'm sure that regulations control that. And when you get too few rooms for the staffing that's required, then you don't become, you know, financially viable kind of operator, right? So, I mean, I don't personally question the size based on operations. I think we have to continue, our job is really the zoning. We're not relitigating whether it was a good zoning or not. I mean, the zoning is in place. We're not rewriting zoning. So we have to really get back to the zoning and, you know, whether there's a public benefit and a public good and whether impacts have been mitigated. And that's where our lane is. And I think, you know, while we have interests and sympathies and all, and understanding about some of the concerns we've heard, we are required to stay in our lane. One thing we haven't talked about is if we do a denial and it's appealed, we have to have something which can stand on appeal. And so we have to find, that's why we go back to the zoning. And then we look at conditions, and the conditions are really important. And, you know, I think we need a lot of time to think about whether, and discuss whether it meets the zoning and whether the impacts are mitigated. And then we need to have a lot of discussion about the conditions. And there's, and we also need to think about whether there's any information that we think we still need before we close a public hearing. So I'm hopeful that we can have time for that tonight, for some of that tonight, anyway.
Yep. So with that, I think, thank you all so much for us hearing you, you hearing us, you know, just sort of where we are at this point. And we understand, you know, the timing is an issue for the hospital. So with that, why don't we let some of the residents or the neighbors speak, and then we can follow up with the discussion. Thank you. If there's anyone who would like to come and speak.
Repetitive. Let's not have some of the same.
Oh, yeah. Great. Thank you, Bard. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Great to see you all again. I'm Bard Hiresi of 11 Spafford Road, for the record. I'll be brief tonight, but I just had a few slides that I wanted to highlight. I don't know, Tim, if you're able to bring up PDFs that I sent over. You know, first of all, again, thank you all so much for the care and consideration. I think, you know, just a couple of sort of introductory points. At the start of the presentation that I shared with Tim earlier, you know, I went back and I listened to the, some of the Conservation Commission meetings from the past year, particularly the one in August 2023. And, you know, what really struck me was one of the members, Tom Palmer, you know, he actually said, "You know, I really feel for the neighbors. This is a dramatic change potentially to the neighborhood, the largest change since probably Milton Hospital was built." So, you know, I think he summarized what a lot of us feel, and that is that this is a big deal for our neighborhood. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, throughout this process, I think you all recognize that. And I think from day one, what, you know, at least my perspective and a lot of the group that's with me, you know, have felt is that, you know, we're trying to get a full accounting of the impacts of this project, and we're trying to, you know, do what we can to mitigate those impacts. And I don't think any of us have said we don't recognize the public need or the public benefit, or we have anything against the memory care use case. I think what we've said is, you know, we're against overdevelopment and really a substantial overutilization of an environmentally sensitive site that turns out, as we've learned, actually generates a lot more detrimental impact than what was initially sold to the town. And, you know, maybe some of that information, you know, Milton Hospital board members were not aware of. But, you know, I remember vividly that night at town meeting when I said, "Listen, based on talking to assisted living and nursing home directors, you know, and I'm a consultant who does expert interviews for a living, you know, I got data on how many people you need per shift for this many beds." And we came up with what we thought was a reasonable estimate of 150 vehicle trips per day, and we were shouted down and told, "That's a gross exaggeration. You don't know memory care." Well, it turns out that the vehicle trips are actually almost double. And the 2,000 trips a week, you know, everything is relative in how you compare it to, but it is similar to a large apartment, impacts of a large apartment building, plus the commercial traffic. So, you know, so the traffic, you know, it's an issue. You know, we've looked at things to try to mitigate that. We've asked for a traffic study for the whole neighborhood. You know, we've seen a presentation recently that was, you know, I would say kind of perfunctory, if you will. You know, so there's certainly some things that we'd like to see done. But really, the, it's the fact that, you know, we keep hearing about the public benefit, and we, you know, when we hear that, the more we hear that, what we hear is, you know, "You're asking us, the town, to break all the rules to let us build at this size." Because, you know, if you look at some of these 40B applications, you look at other projects around town, and this is part of the reason why we filed an appeal with Superior Court, is that Conservation Commission almost never grants a waiver for the 25-foot non-disturbance to override Milton's bylaw. This project is asking to build in a non-disturbed zone. That waiver is granted for almost no one. Homeowners would never dare to even think about that because they're told that's a sacred bylaw. You know, and, you know, they just, everyone just designs their projects so that they comply. And similarly, we know they're asking for special exemption on access. It's one thing if the fire chief feels confident that he can stop traffic to get fire trucks in and out. It's a totally different thing when daily deliveries, we found out they have daily deliveries of heavy truck traffic, will need to drive on the opposite travel lane to enter and exit the site, which is against state law. So they're asking for special dispensation on that. You know, so when we talk about reducing the size, I think why that's so important is the, you know, it really does scale back on the impacts of impervious surface, and that is really a critical thing. You know, we recognize it's their right to ask to close the hearing, but last night, we just received a whole dump of documents, including at long last, the submission to DEP of their revised drainage calculations. They're not sharing that with you as they've raised this jurisdictional argument, you know, which we don't agree with, and state law, I don't think, agrees with. You know, it's not your purview to make a determination on stormwater. So because we appealed to the DEP, you're not getting those documents. Even though a couple of weeks ago, they said that you were getting them, they said that they'd have Tetra Tech and Sean review them, now the story changes. Last August, and I'll finish on this, last August, when they withdrew their application, you know, the argument was, "Wow, there've been so many changes. You know, we need to start with a clean slate." So a couple of weeks later, they presented here under a new application, you know, and as it was described, they have to refile everything again. The process will take another six to nine months. Well, at the same time, they had an ongoing process with Conservation Commission, but somehow that process didn't get restarted. And even though they knew they needed another six to nine months with you guys, and they also knew that we would hire a hydrologist to look at the hydrological impacts, they didn't allow CONCOM to continue that meeting. And, you know, as it turned out with Planning Board, it was later said at a meeting by Attorney Ned Corcoran that the real reason they withdrew their application was because they realized that one of the members who had joined mid-hearing couldn't vote. So they felt the town deserved to have a full complement of its board members to vote. Well, it's curious that that night of the Conservation Commission meeting, when they didn't provide many of the detailed documents you have before you, like site sections and elevations and all the detail on the fill, that they were perfectly happy to only have four of seven Conservation Commission members there, the absolute bare minimum, to have a quorum and force a vote. So they could come before you and say, "Listen, CONCOM approved it, so it's all good." You know, and so these are sort of the manipulations in the process that make us feel like that there's not been a good faith effort. Really have not heard at all from day one the concerns about water in particular. And, you know, now, you know, since we've appealed to DEP and to Superior Court, because, you know, first of all, the order of conditions is blank. We don't even know what plans CONCOM approved, you know. And so now, at the introductory meeting, fast forward to January with the DEP, you know, they submitted some changes based on cutting out unused space, those sunrooms. And they said, "We will provide new calculations in two weeks." And the DEP analyst, Pam Merrill, said, "Great. We'll have a site visit. We'll get those documents, and then I'll dig into it. But I'm not going to dig into it until I have all your latest plans." And so it's now April 8th, and they haven't, you know, they finally got around to submitting revised stormwater and drainage plans, you know. And they're, but they're saying to you, "It's unfair to keep the hearing open because we don't know how long that proceeding could go. That could go months." Well, I can tell you for one thing, the, you know, we don't know exactly how long it will take, but it'll definitely take longer if you don't submit the documents they were asking for so they can actually review the project. And what we see from the submissions last night, and I put in the presentation that I wanted to share with you, but hopefully you'll see, you know, with the documents that were emailed, is that there are, you know, I believe, six of 11, you know, violations to the stormwater handbook. I think at least three in there, they have, they have said, and I highlighted them in blue, "We are revising our, and modifying our stormwater design and our drainage here, here, and here in response to the appellants issues that they have raised." So they've gotten up here before you and told you, "We comply, we comply, we comply." But before DEP has even issued a determination or information request or anything, they're already trying to get ahead of it and changing all these things. Because guess what? They didn't comply. And so, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We're not against memory care. We, you know, but we are against something that is a disproportionate impact. And I would respectfully disagree with Sean on the point on the, you know, scaling the size back. Because if you reduce by 20% and get it more in line to what we see at Evita of Needham, which was brought before us as the shiny example, you know, you're talking about some significant reduction in impervious surface. And every 5%, 10%, 20% reduction in impervious surface has potentially huge impacts. We know now they have to put foundation drains and pumps, not just during, while the building's there, but during construction, just to pour a foundation that far below ground into the cut area, they're going to be constantly pumping water into the wetlands, you know, to be able to do that. Our neighbor at 17 Spafford, for a two-car garage, was pumping water for two days to get it dry enough to put a foundation for the garage. So it's a major issue, and those things have not been studied. And even at the DEP, where they're focusing on groundwater, they're not studying them. So we would feel a lot better about the project, and that's why we're asking. You know, we have asked, as you heard our attorney, Dan Hill, two weeks ago, that they consider redesigning the project, you know, and cutting down on that size significantly. Fewer beds means fewer visitors. It means fewer, you know, you maybe have less frequent deliveries because you don't need, you know, as much of every item. And, you know, visitors are significant, not just for family, but for driving patient or residents to their doctor's visits. Northbridge offers a transportation package. So, you know, people get shuttled around frequently. So the fewer residents you have, the less traffic you have there too. So I do believe that there is definitely a benefit to, and a mitigation of impacts from smaller size. And I think that's what we've been asking for. If they're not willing to budge or move or negotiate at all now that we know, you know, and they're insisting on asking for these special dispensations to violate local and state regulations, then we would urge you to vote no. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Say your name and address for the record?
Of course. I'm here on behalf of Karen Bacardi. Sorry, I know you need my name as well.
Thank you.
Carla Woinihan. I'm an attorney at Sharon &amp; Loggins, partner in the real estate department. Karen Bacardi resides at 137 Highland. Thank you very much for your time. I will not be long because Bard said a ton of it. So thank you very much. So I agree with everything that was put into the record. I will just point out a couple of things, and I do appreciate all of the time and effort that you all take in, and hopefully will continue to take in connection with the deliberation. One of the interesting things that came out of tonight's conversation thus far was the conversation, I believe, from your consultant, the peer consultant, that even with reductions, that there would not be any significant improvement on the adverse conditions. So with all due respect, perhaps this isn't the right project. I understand fully what was done at town meeting. I used to be a planning board member in Belmont. Been through a number of town meetings there. I no longer reside there, no longer on PB. But I do appreciate what happens when you're putting in new zoning and what was attempted at the time and was successful by only 16 votes, from what I understand. So it was a very tight call amongst the public here for wonderful things, for public good, all those wonderful, and no one's spiting that part of it. But to really get at the other part, the very key part that a number of you have alluded to and mentioned explicitly, without significant unmitigated detrimental impacts. And that's the concern, period. That's certainly the concern of my client as the direct abutter to the project. And the concern that was raised about, "Well, even if we did this, even if we reduced it by 10%, even if we did X, Y, and Z, there'd still be all these problems." Well, I, with all due respect, think that it wasn't considered fully, and that's not appropriate. It wouldn't have been. It was a site of this, certainly challenged. People understood about the wetlands, but people did not know. With all due respect to my, you know, colleague and as a member of the bar, there was not that analysis, full-blown analysis, done. If it had been, it would have been discussed, right? It was overlooked, and then for all due respect, the other part is the whole idea of not more than, and this whole idea that, well, it wasn't the maximum. That is that there's no change from that. And you're basically being given a choice of, if it's not this, it's one of the other three, and we all know what this will be. And I don't deal in threats very well. I think that that's not appropriate. I think that you all deserve, you know, full performance in terms of the analysis. And I do respect that there should be open further. This should not be closed. If you do choose to close, I agree with, you know, the comments before from Bard, that it should be no at this point. I think that the information that you have to date, with no other information coming in, derives that decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ingrid Allos, Clifton Road.
You can just pull the microphone up, yeah.
Yep, okay. So, you know, it's very disappointing, because none of what we heard, of what we heard today, really quieted down the concerns that we have about water and traffic. I live on Clifton Road, we installed a sump pump six months ago, and even with that, we still got water. And this is Clifton, so I can't imagine what our neighbors in Spafford and Buckingham will have to deal with. The other thing that I think hasn't been, you know, spoken enough about is, a lot of kids walk and bike to and from school in that area. So to say that, you know, there will be occasional visitors for a facility that has 80 beds, I just think that's very misleading.
Meredith, we've got some folks on Zoom.
Okay, great, Tim, thank you.
We've got Nadine Hannah.
All right, we just have someone here.
Oh, all right, Nadine.
And then Nadine, I'll get you next.
Just a minute.
I'm just gonna read what I wrote. Thank you, Board and Madam Chair, for allowing me a few minutes to speak. Ms. Sofield, I want to extend my condolences to you and your family. The applicant's attorney has made the case for building this facility, often citing the zoning change in the 2015 master plan as grounds to move forward. The master plan titled "Preserving Our Past, Planning Our Future" is a good plan. Ms. Taguayis, the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, had the responsibility to move forward the plan, but 10 years have passed and things have changed, especially with the global pandemic. In the master plan, it states, "Improve getting around town for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users. Building this facility will do the opposite." The Town of Milton Open Space and Recreation Plan calls for, quote, "protecting Milton's open spaces, including ponds, riverfronts, streams, and brooks, and wetlands, in a natural state that can be enjoyed by future generations. Building this facility will do the opposite." While I respect the immense amount of time and effort it took to craft the plan and zoning, we now know more information, and the decision has been made, the decision has to be made on the totality of the presented information. I urge the Board to adapt any and all information that is presented. The applicant's attorney's continual defamation of the neighbor's hired hydrologists and ecological experts are simply ad hominem attacks, and should further prove the point that there remains much to discuss regarding water issues. I went to school with your sons and daughters. I urge you to please consider future generations and future homeowners, as this would be a forever problem. We are already seeing the effects of overdevelopment on precious waterways around the state and country. Where does all the water go? It goes to our rising oceans. I am planning to submit a formal letter to the EPW and Planning Board regarding the clay pipe that runs through my property, and the previous letter submitted by Mary Rimmer, which stated that this project could potentially alter the water flow and flood my property in 137 Highland Street. Thank you for your time.
Teresa O'Brien, 42 Spafford Road. Just as you talked about Meredith, about if they did make it smaller, you could add more trees. There was one, I think, plan, if they moved the service area to the back, they would get 10 less rooms, but that'd be amazing to have more trees in the front, so that the neighbors and everyone walking down the street wouldn't see it, and it would be much more pleasing to the eye. So if you could, make it a little bit smaller, build more trees, build more of a barrier, that'd be great. My sump pump has been going nonstop for the past two weeks, with all the rain we've been getting. I also noticed, and I don't know if it's anything to do with Marine Road, they, there's a whole new street up, that was just added, there was another house on Highland. So to say, like, we definitely know where the water's going to go, you don't, because unfortunately, like, if you drive up Highland, you can just see so much water coming down. And as Ingrid said, all these kids, it's not just Spafford Road, Meredith Circle, Coolidge, they all cross the street, all the high school kids, Pierce kids, they all caught up, because no one wants their kids walking on Reed's Dale. As we saw yesterday, there was a car that lost control, went through someone's fence. So please think of all of that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if we can let Nadine in next, she's just on Zoom.
Hello, everyone. Nadine Hannah, on 42 Spafford Road. Thank you once again for all of your time, and I just want to say, actually, Tim, I could ask you please to pull up the link bar and send the links to Google. One of them is traffic, we don't have to pause on it at all, but if you don't like just kind of scrolling through, to remind not the people in the room, but apparently people from like the hospital, who might finally be paying attention to the traffic on Spafford Road, while also contesting the nature of the traffic on Spafford Road. I've never felt more hurt than I have tonight by so many of the members of the Planning Board. I want to...
Nadine, Nadine, can you, Nadine, can you, just, I'm getting a question. Meredith, the slideshow show that Nadine referred to, um, Nadine, do I, do I, do I?
No problem.
I think we're getting some echo.
Yeah.
While I was talking, sorry about that.
That's better.
The slideshow that Nadine referred to was sent after hours, just an hour and a half before the hearing opened. I didn't get a chance to review it, I didn't get a chance to send it, I just, I put it up on my computer. So I just wanted to double-check with you that it's okay to put up these slides. We haven't had a chance to review them for relevance, or duplicativeness, or anything like that.
Nadine, are they, are they new slides, or are they slides that we've seen before?
They're primarily slides that we've seen before, and anything that's new on it is just, it's, you know, more of the same, because that's what we're living, we're living more of the same, more ambulances, more deliveries. I actually could tell you that now I've pretty much nailed it down, that the Crown Services truck comes at least on Thursdays from 12:30 to 1:30 in the afternoon. So it's, it's not new evidence, as far as like something that's gonna, you know, blow your minds, but it is to show the frequency, the consistency, the prevalence, and the fact that, what was the quote, that traffic, the traffic situation is endemic in the Town of Milton. Hospital commercial traffic is not endemic to the Town of Milton, it is a plague on Spafford Road. There's a major difference there, and we're talking about adding another medical facility to the top of Spafford Road in Highland, which will completely increase and exacerbate the current commercial traffic issues, because now we're going to be adding not just additional lending services, not just additional commercial traffic vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. We're also going to be adding in large-scale food service to the top of this neighborhood, to this residential neighborhood that does not exist right now. So as much as I've never felt, and I was saying, I've never felt so hurt, I really appreciate so many of you Planning Board members, and the comments that you made really hit home for me tonight, I'm also more, my concerns are amplified after hearing what a board member from the hospital, his testimony and responses to the questions that you all raised. If that was meant to be anything other than presenting the threat of, you know, alternative sites, excuse me, buildings at that site, if it was meant to assuage, you know, any of our concerns and fears, it definitely fell way short of the mark. And it's scary. As a neighbor, as a resident, it's scary. We do try to be good neighbors. If they, if North Bridge is using Milton Hospital, Beth Israel, as, you know, the role model for a good neighbor to abutters, I'm an abutter of the hospital property, I do not feel that they are a good neighbor. I can completely respect the opinion of all of the abutters to the proposed site, that they will not be a good neighbor, because who they're marrying in with is already not a good neighbor to the neighbors, not necessarily to the town, I understand. As a functioning facility within the town, it bears benefit. I brought my own children to Milton Hospital when we had an emergency, that's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about to the people specifically living within impacted, direct, you know, properties to the site. The second album, which I know that you haven't been able to show, that they might not want to show tonight, that is new. I was, I made a new friend up on Highland, she lives above the site, if you were to travel up from the hospital, passes site and onto Highland Ave, and I was allowed to walk quite a bit of that side of the property line, the residential side of the property line. And what I found throughout, and I'm not sure if the Planning Board has been reported, or, you know, if it was something that was considered, there are so many different streams that run from multiple sources, not just on the site, not just on the proposed memory care site. They start off as trickles, right? You're walking through, you all live at the top corner of these properties, as far away from the site in question, and you don't even pay attention, right, to how much impact water in the small scale has, but it looks like nothing but a trickle. And you follow along, and a trickle merges with another trickle, and you keep going throughout the back of these properties, and all of a sudden, you're at a pool, a pool, not a standing pool of water, a running pool of water, it's not something that's on the hospital site, but where is all this water going to? It's going through that culvert, that pipe that is at the chain link fence, there's pictures, there's video, there's all kinds of things you guys can take a look at in your own time. There is so much water back there, I was shocked. I was astounded, and I was floored. I think, and after, was it three rainstorms in a row, this water, even in the front, on the Highland Ave, you know, where we always see some standing water along the property line on Highland Ave, it wasn't, it's not just standing, it's moving. It's just, you know, on a regular day, it might seem like it's standing, because it's pulling up in certain places, but when you're looking after these major rain events, as I was afforded the privilege to do, the water is omnipresent and continuously flowing. I don't know that you can build anything there. I'm not a specialist, I don't pretend to be a specialist in things that I'm not, but I would say that whatever they're gonna do on the site, they can't control what's happening off-site. So even if they're mitigating to some extent, the concerns that have been found within the constraints of the site, and as, you know, Teresa even mentioned, there are other areas being developed within this neighborhood, things that are approved, things that are, you know, have recently made changes to the environment. When you watch those videos, you're gonna look, and you're just like, where is this water gonna go after this? They're gonna pop a building pretty much right near where that stream ends up. I don't know, it definitely bears pausing, additional thought. And to, one more point to the comment of, again, you know, any reduction in size would, you know, not really result in, the impact, if you're feeding through people, you don't need to bring as many groceries, right? If you're, if you're treating medically through your people, you don't have necessarily as much need for, you know, God forbid, an ambulance visit. Anything that you do that reduces the size of the building, that reduces the occupancy of the building, that reduces the needs and the services that need to be raised at that building, will better the neighborhood. Because we, as it stands, with what's going in, we are hugely negatively impacted. You cannot call yourself a good neighbor on one hand, and respond no to every question asked of you. Every question asked by the Planning Board tonight, to the legal counsel, to the hospital chair who is visiting, you were met with the answer of no. So to recap back to my, one of my first comments, my concerns for the proposed site, after what I heard tonight, are amplified, and my hope that the hospital will ever come in and do anything to help my neighborhood out with the current issues is gone. I don't, there's, there's nothing left there to even think about. What do they need? They want, do they want more pictures? They want more letters? I told you before, we stopped sending them, because it fell on deaf ears. So, here are our last line of defense. Bard, if he asked you, I won't repeat it, you know what I feel, you know, I was listening to that stuff, I was jumping up and down in the kitchen. Thanking you guys, and I'll thank you again.
Thank you, Nadine.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Good evening, Manhattan, 16 Spafford Road. I will be brief this evening. I promise. I just couldn't say it any better than my neighbors have said it, and all of you with your thoughtful questions this evening. Thank you for listening to us, thank you for looking out for our concerns, as was evident, you know, stated that you would. But I just would like to point out that sadly, I believe we are in an impasse, because our attorney a few weeks ago said, it's opening day, let's start again, play ball, try and get a project that will work for everyone. And the answer seems to be, we're not willing to play ball. And so I don't think with all of what's in the record here, and no mitigation, it is possible for this site to go forward without a significant impact on our neighborhood. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Tim, on Zoom who would like to speak? Their hands up.
Yes, we've got a couple. Elizabeth Pyle.
Okay, welcome.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, thanks very much. My name is Elizabeth Pyle. I'm an attorney with Dan Hill at Hill Law. And before I'd like to make my remarks, I just wanted to ask, Tim, if you received the letter that I sent this afternoon? Did you receive my letter today, Tim?
You're gonna have to hold on a minute.
I did, I heard Tim say that he was out and had a big pileup in his inbox, and I just wanted to make sure that the letter that I sent this afternoon about 1:00 PM was submitted for the record, if you could just check.
Yeah, Elizabeth, I have it, it's in the record. If you wanted to summarize right now, you know, please, please do that.
Okay, thank you. And I don't, I don't really need to go into it in depth right now, I wanted to clarify some things in the record, just responding to some things that were provided in a letter from Jesse Alderman last week, correcting some misconceptions that were made in that letter, and explaining the case law to you, and why it's still within your purview to review the stormwater of this site. And I would note that this board still does not have the stormwater plan, even though it was promised, and even though the applicant submitted the stormwater management report to the DEP yesterday. So they gave it to the DEP to review, but they have not given it to you yet for review, even though they have it and have made it a public document to DEP. So where you don't have the stormwater report, this applicant has not demonstrated that they comply with the stormwater standards, and you have no way of verifying that they comply with the stormwater standards, because you don't have the information before you to check, and your peer reviewer doesn't have the information before him to check based on the most current plan. Also, where you don't have the stormwater report and the stormwater information that was submitted to DEP, you also don't have the information before you to make an informed finding that this project will not cause any detriment to the neighborhood. And that requirement to not cause any detriment to the neighborhood is in Section 15 of the bylaw here for the special permit. And this language that you need to decide will not cause any detriment to the neighborhood, that language is not in the Wetlands Protection Act, that's not anything DEP is gonna look at, that's within your purview. And that's why it's important to have the full set of documents and informations, so that you can make the correct determination about whether it complies with all of the criteria listed in the bylaw that you have before you. So we've said a lot to you already tonight, my clients have said information to you tonight, requesting that you deny this project. I reiterate that we would ask for a denial of this project at this point, because there's been inadequate information that's been submitted to you to make a decision on stormwater compliance. That's something that will be a, that could be a foundation for your decision, that if they appeal, that would be something that you can rely on. And we ask you to issue a denial. Like Dan Hill said two weeks ago, today's opening day, we wish that they would have played ball, but if they're not going to play ball, we ask for a denial tonight. So we had hoped that they would work with us, they have not. We still invite them to, it's not too late, but... We still invite them to, it's not too late, but if that's the way it's going to be, then we request that you deny tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And Tim, who else do we have on Zoom?
We have Alex Fieravanti.
Okay. And I will let you respond.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Alex.
Hi, hi, my name is Alexandra Fieravanti. I live at 138 Island Street. I am right across the street from the projected project. I think my fellow neighbors did a great job of expressing the concerns that our neighbors have for this project. I just want to reiterate that the water for this project has me extremely concerned for my property. We moved in about four years ago, and since then, we've had record rain by some pump runs constantly. If you walk outside my house, you can see that we have a pool of water constantly, even when it's sunny out, because the water table is just so high here. So I urge you to take your time on this decision and really think about the implications that this will have on our neighborhood, especially for building this ginormous project on wetlands. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Alex. Anyone else, Tim?
Welcome to the Zoom.
Anyone else?
None.
No one else on Zoom? Okay, great. And anyone else here in the public who would like to join us, please?
Jesse Alderman, who is...
Great.
I was wondering if you could speak briefly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
May I talk on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
I'd like, if now's the time, if there's no one else from the...
Is there anyone else from the public? Okay, one more, and then, good. Thank you.
Dan O'Neill, 15 Safford Road, town meeting member, Precinct 9. Thank you for the thoughtful consideration that you've given the neighbors, and also the respect that you've given the applicant. We haven't received that respect, to be honest with you. We look at this as Safford Road is being bullied. Everybody says, "Oh, not in my backyard." Well, it literally is in my backyard. I have a standing pond in my backyard every time it rains. I put in $15,000 worth of improvements to a French drain. I put in two sump pumps to keep up with the water that seeps through my basement. Safford Road is going to get crushed with traffic even more. We don't have sidewalks, I'm not going to rehash all this, but every single issue of this project is being stuffed right down our throat and our sewer line on our road. It's really, it's overwhelming. The fact that this applicant is basically acting as a bully is shameful. There's no concession whatsoever from the beginning of this application when it was filed. It's misinformation that was given to the town meeting, misinformation, missing information that is not given to you, is shameful. I've done 23 years of public corruption investigations for the state of Massachusetts. I worked as a criminal investigator for the Inspector General's office. The fact that there's so much that is not being disclosed to this body, to this town, it smacks of, and I'll say it, it's fraud, it's fraudulent. You deserve, you're the elected official body, you deserve all the facts. They can hide it from us, but they can't hide it from you. Well, Jesse's, Jesse Alderman's joining me. I did get a reminder from my client that when we started this three-plus years ago, we were actually at 80 units and a larger number of beds. We did come down to 70 units and 78 beds during the initial process with the neighborhood and the board as we went to town meeting. I had forgotten that.
Thank you, members of the board. Jesse Alderman, attorney for Foley-Hogg, representing the applicant in the proceeding before the Department of Environmental Protection right now on the appeal of the order of conditions. What the, what the neighbors have requested is called a superseding order of conditions. The word superseding is very important. They're entitled to disagree with us. They're entitled to frustration about what clearly sounds like a pervasive water issue, not caused by a project that hasn't been built yet, but probably caused by environmental conditions and other development. But what I'll say is they're not entitled to their own law. City of Boston versus Quincy Conservation Commission, which Ms. Pyle did not address in her letter to you today, but which I addressed in my letter to this board, states that the Department of Environmental Protection's determination of its regulations and the state's stormwater standards are within its regulations, is, preempts any redetermination or contrary determination by a local board unless the local board's bylaw is more stringent than the department's regulations. What you have before you is a zoning bylaw that says you must meet state stormwater standards. Quote, "meet." Meet does not mean exceed. Meet does not mean reevaluate. Meet means meet. If the department, everybody's talking about here, and I was very interested to hear that conversation, about what comes next. Well, I can tell you that the issue of stormwater has so infected these proceedings, it is discussed by each of you, it is discussed by every member of the public at every meeting, that I'm not aware of how a no vote could be anything, could be interpreted as anything other than a determination on stormwater standards. It has been the prevailing issue discussed in these proceedings. And I urge you to take a look at the City of Boston versus Quincy Conservation Commission, which interprets decades and decades and reaffirms decades of law about the DEP's preemptive effect. The DEP will make a determination that this project complies with state stormwater standards. It's not even remotely close. And we've already gotten indications from the department that that's the case. The Conservation Commission reached that same conclusion. So I'm concerned about issues of preemption here, and I urge you to look at that case law and to discuss the impact that the discussion on stormwater has had at these proceedings. Thank you very much.
Sean, do you, did you want to comment just...
I mean, at the risk of this...
At this point, no.
Yeah, I mean, just to reiterate, my opinion is, the project has adequately demonstrated compliance with standards. The issues that are being discussed right now, to me, peripheral, de minimis matters of opinion, that frankly, I wouldn't argue with DEP, I'd just agree to him on these matters, whatever they decide, just comply with. So I think the recent changes that have been made are reactive unnecessarily to some comments that I think are, it's a more robust design, but I think it's overly complicated. And so I wouldn't have asked for it because I think it was unnecessary. So the changes that are being considered from DEP right now are on the very, very margin. My opinion is still that the project complies with standards and meets the intent and the letter of those regulations.
Good, so just a point of clarification, if I may, there was comments made about whether, that we had not received, and our peer review consultant hadn't received, the filing. So I see an email from Tim this morning, which I, it has an email attached to it with a link to download documents, which required a key code, which I didn't have the key code for. However, I want just to note that the forwarded email was Ned Corcoran had sent to Tim with a copy to Sean Riordan. And I'm curious, Sean, if you were able to download those documents?
I frankly didn't try.
Okay.
Again, because the changes, as I mentioned last hearing, are all sort of marginal changes that are all mitigative in nature. So I've seen enough of the design and of the prior iterations of the stormwater analysis. So we do have a stormwater report based on an early design. I have seven comment letters that the applicant has changed and tweaked things at my request. You know, at the very beginning, some big changes, all in an effort to, my opinion of what's required under compliance standards. So the stuff that's in front of DEP right now, to me, is, in all likelihood, I'm going to disagree with their opinion, but their opinion is going to matter, and that's what the applicant's going to have to design to. So, you know, nothing in the, I don't require any more documentation to maintain my opinion.
So can I ask Sean one more question?
Yep.
So Sean, I think you said earlier about a reduction in the size of the building or an impervious area wouldn't have an impact, maybe not a significant impact. But let's just say you didn't have the parking lot that's across the stream bed. I'm trying to get a sense of what is the scale of reduction in pervious area that would be significant to the stormwater design, in your view? Like, would it have to be, cut the impervious in half, cut the impervious by a third? Do you have any sense of that?
Keep in mind, the outcome is still going to be the same.
Okay.
Because the standards dictate the same treatment. So if you reduce your impervious by 50%, then you reduce your mitigation burden by 50%. So your infiltration systems will get smaller, your mitigation measures will get smaller because they scale with impervious surface. There's sort of the visceral impression of, you know, development coverage, what's pavement, what's building? What I wanted to make sure is that you understood that if you just reduce room count, you're really not going to see a sort of a literal shrinking of the project, because so much of the project is there to serve access, there to serve parking, and there to serve deliveries and things like that. So...
So another thing, because we have maybe more in the audience than we've had at some meetings, can, can you just give a quick, you know, Stormwater Standard 101, you know, what the requirement is in terms of a new development with respect to an exist, what exists on the site today? So what are the requirements with a new development?
Sure. The standards were developed, I think, back in like the 80s. Because prior to that, there was, nobody cared about stormwater. And even today, it's, over the last decade or so, has been really come to the forefront of a lot of people's attention, particularly with EPA. So it's starting to get sort of the traction that it's deserved over the years. But these standards were developed specifically to make sure that when you develop a project, that you don't have any corresponding impacts that would be detrimental to the environment or detrimental to other property. There are 10 standards. The two biggest ones are the standard that require you to meet pre-development runoff peaks. So in other words, if you can imagine how fast water leaves the site, means how fast water is leaving your site and getting onto someone else's site. Now, in this case, it's a little bit different because most of the concern is from properties that are upgrading. So those properties are actually, their water is draining down to this site. So in this case, one of the reasons that I'm so confident that Safford Road residents and the residents on the other ladder streets won't be impacted, is because they're at higher ground. And as you can imagine, if you're at higher ground, water flows downhill. So any modest changes on this site are not going to reflect across the wetland systems and impact those properties, without question. So beyond that, though, the standard requires you to say, to analyze all your runoff under pre-development conditions, determine how much flow goes off at each part of your site. Then, under post-development conditions, look at those same conditions, evaluate all the additional runoff that you're creating by virtue of creating impervious surface. Then you need to design systems that store that water on site so that it can't leave any faster than it did under pre-development conditions. So that you're basically not allowing any more water to leave your site than did, than it does currently. Other standards include, they have requirements for, you've got to maintain recharge. So recharge has been a real sort of lobbying point. What was kind of the frustrating part for me on the most recent round of changes, because the recent round of changes actually increases the amount of infiltration that's happening. When we'd heard so much about how concerned they were about infiltration, but then to have a comment generate more infiltration seemed a little bit counterintuitive. But the standard nonetheless requires you to maintain a certain amount of recharge. Again, standards aren't perfect, they're there to demonstrate compliance. So they have specific numbers in there that you have targets that you have to meet based on how much impervious coverage you have.
So I think one of the concerns that folks, not just in this project, but in this general neighborhood, and maybe many parts of Milton have, is that the water table is so high. So if you're storing the water, at what point, like, how long is it stored? Like, you have the rain events like we've had in the last month, is there a point where that's just full? And then what if the ground can't take it to recharge? What happens?
No, the water will always move from what we call an area of higher head to lower head. So gravity is, gravity's always working. So if you have water up here and it can get downhill, it's going to go downhill. Same thing with the groundwater table. If the groundwater table's here and you have water up here, it's going to make its way into the groundwater table and flatten out.
Okay, again, recharge means it's going to go down, or it's going to go out towards...
Recharge means it's going to go down.
Right.
So recharge is, runoff is stuff that goes off the surface. That's usually the, that's the big problem, right? Because that's what ends up in people's backyards, that's what ends up flooding people out. The recharge is the water that goes through the soil into the groundwater.
So the water, the stormwater is getting collected...
Yep.
...and into pipes from the roof, from the impervious surfaces, going into these chambers.
Yep.
It sits in those chambers until it can slowly release into the ground.
Correct. Or it's modulated as it goes out to, at the levels that it did under pre-development conditions. The reason recharge is so great, right, is because if you're recharging groundwater, it's not running off your site. So it's not creating damage downstream, it's not, it's not overloading pipes, it's not carrying trash. So infiltration is great. The burden becomes, it's pretty slow, right? So when you have rain, when you get big rain events, there's very little additional recharge because the ground's already wet, the soil's already saturated, all that new rain just runs right off the surface. So the recharge is really for the smaller storm events, that we want to make sure that we're sort of maintaining that, that initial sort of slug that goes into the ground.
So continuing on the 101. How do you then confirm that what they've designed meets those standards?
There's about 250 pages. That's, it's a whole volume of the Stormwater Handbook that's called Documenting Compliance. And it literally goes every standard, and there's, for each one, there's all the work that you have to do, from evaluating soil conditions on the site, to modeling pre-development conditions, to modeling post-development conditions, to how you can model infiltration, to what you need for information to model infiltration, and then all the standards by which you have to meet to demonstrate that you've met the standard.
So when there's a situation where there's no wetlands on the property, you still have stormwater requirements?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So...
Milton has stormwater requirements.
Milton does, right. So Milton, under its zoning bylaw, has drawn a connection to the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. The only place under the regulations that it comes in is under the Wetlands Protection Act. So in theory, if Milton didn't have a bylaw that referenced the standards, if a project didn't require a permit from Conservation Commission, there's nothing that necessarily requires them to comply with the standards.
Unless you want to be a good neighbor, on my site, I have zero wetlands. Zero. So through my special permit, I did not have to go to COMCOM. What did I have to do? Put in an extensive drainage system to be a good neighbor. And to get a special permit, planning board at that time asked me to do it. And I understand water flows, I'm right in the Blue Hills, I'm right in the middle, and it keeps going down. So I understand your point, but we're talking about good neighbors, we're talking about being part of a community. And I think we have to be aware of that, that there's a precedent has been set by this planning board to require more of an applicant than just stormwater, the stormwater standards.
Understood.
So I just had a question for Sean. Will DEP do a hydrology study on the site? Are they...
DEP will review everything that's been submitted to them.
So there will be a... We will be able to get a verified hydrology report, just for our, just so we know that it's been done.
So this term hydrology...
Certified hydrologist.
Everything that relates to stormwater is hydrology, right? Stormwater, hydro? Hydro is the study of...
But there's a difference in when an engineer is looking at it versus a hydrologist.
No, there isn't. There is absolutely zero difference. Zero difference. Everything that we do is hydrology-based.
That's not my understanding. My understanding was the Conservation Commission asked for a hydrologist, they thought they were getting one, and they did not get one. And then we thought that the Conservation Commission was getting a hydrologist. I just want to make sure there is a hydrologist study being done.
So what we, what we do is hydrology. It's a subset of what we do as engineers. It's a subset of what we do as engineers.
Right. I'm not questioning my...
No, no, no. It's a term that keeps coming up, and it's a bit sort of frustrating because I've tried to sort of express it, and maybe I'm not expressing it clear enough. Just like when I look at a pavement section, right? Me as an engineer, I need to understand how pavement is designed. Me as an engineer, I need to know how soil is reinforced. I mean, as part of my study in college, we had a hydrology course. As part of my study in college, we had a survey course. As part of my study in college, we had a soils course. So these are all subsets of what we do as engineers.
So DEP will do that, is what you're saying?
Without question. Without question. And it's important to...
That's important for also...
And it's important to note that the standards require a certification of compliance with the standards from a registered Massachusetts professional civil engineer, not from a hydrologist, from a registered professional Massachusetts civil engineer. Because so many things impact stormwater that aren't just hydrology. So we have pipe flow calculations. We have pavement design. We have roof design. We have all sorts of things that feed into stormwater design, hydrology being one of them. The only thing that I think maybe people are confusing is there's a term called a hydrogeologist. A hydrogeologist is a bit different. These are really, really, really smart people that just study how water moves through soil and rock and stuff like that. But they're more of the contaminant transport people, the water supply people, things like that. They deal exclusively and only with how water moves through soil and rock. They're a very, very, very narrow set. And we have people all the time that, you know, are on staff that do that as well.
All right. My other question is, how often do you see a bond required? You know, we have tree, you know, we bond for trees, you know, tree loss, or any sort of mitigation should, we're telling the neighbors, there will be no water, no more water issues than currently exist. Let's imagine that there were.
Not often enough and not in an amount. So...
So what would you recommend to our board as far as having some sort of bond to the project?
Well, to the extent that there's any commitment that you want to hold the applicant to, a bond is a reasonable tool. You know, I can tell you from experience, trying to manage construction and trying to manage contractors, unless you have some sort of leverage to get them to do the job that they were supposed to do, is very difficult. A bond is an absolutely responsible way and effective way of doing that. If you have a monetary incentive, it's amazing how much more people will react than if you don't. So to the extent that you have a concern of compliance with the standards, you can come up with a reasonable bonding requirement. But you do have to have a sort of an estimate in a way of releasing that bond. So what we typically do for, say, a subdivision roadway.
Yep.
So for example, if a developer is building a subdivision roadway and they're going to try and sell lots, well, we need to make sure that the roads that they committed to building are going to get built even if something happens to them. So we require a bond that's itemized, that says, okay, you've got to put up a bond of $500,000 based on all these values to cover the cost of completion of the road if something happens to protect sort of the people that have already bought homes. In this case, it's a private site, so it's kind of hard to see where that linkage would come. But, you know, to the extent that there's something that you're concerned about, I'm sure there's something you can come up with.
Can I join this question? Because I just want to go a little bit further with this. Sean, I think your response, I think, is in response, you know, how often is a bond and how much? And you said, not often enough and usually not enough money?
Correct.
Are you speaking to the course of construction of a project? Or are you speaking...
More typically.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
My, and I understand that. But I guess the, I think the question you're asking, and if you're not asking it, I am, it's, the conditions exist today that the applicant asserts their construction of their project and the completion of it. Let me say the completion of it. Let's not ignore the construction of the project. There's a way to manage that too.
Yep.
Right? There's a process. But post-construction, when this development is complete, there will be no harm caused to the neighborhood by this design when it's built. And I guess my question would be, is there a mechanism to create funding that if they're wrong, the neighbors have some way of gaining some relief, some financial relief?
Yeah. My answer would be different on that. I don't think that's at all...
I think we separate the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think that the first one is a real one. We want to make sure through the course of construction that, and I'm very familiar with it. I live with the responsibilities of, you know, stormwater runoff from a site. So I get all that. And the penalties are harsh. So whoever builds it, in this case, it's Earlland, Earlland will be held accountable for that. But my interest is more post-construction. Is there a way to provide the neighbors some relief should the condition post-development meet their worries?
The issue there is intuitively, yes, but in practicality, no. And here's why. Because stormwater is such a nebulous thing. And even particularly now, where we're talking about climate change, right? I can tell you, this past year has been absolutely brutal in terms of runoff, elevated high groundwater. And all indications are it's trending forward. The good news is, the stormwater standards deal with that because we have a scalable process for how we design storms of different sizes. Once you get to a certain size, it, everything's pretty much running off the site. So I remember having a conversation with John Sullivan, who is the chief engineer for Boston Warren Super Commission. We were talking about the 100-year storm in Boston. And he says, Sean, I don't care about the 100-year storm. Everything's underwater in Boston during the 100-year storm. So I says, well, that's pretty intuitive. But in this case, you know, what's going to end up happening is, Sean, if you go, if something sort of suggests that something went wrong, the first thing you're going to do is you're going to go back and look at the standards and the design, and how did the design correlate to the standards? If in fact, the board hadn't engaged someone like me to help them review it, and something bad happened, and it was because they didn't meet the standards, then it's, you know, it's a done deal, right? You didn't do what you were supposed to do. In this case, I think it would be almost impossible to demonstrate that anything happening after this project, if they did everything that the designer called for, to establish that any negative impact would be resulting from the work of the project.
And I understand that. It's, it's not that I wanted to ask you a question that, you know, that I understood I was going to get the, I knew the answer I was going to get. But if you're a resident, right, and they're all sitting here, and they've had this ongoing question and concern, is there any way to satisfy them? Is there any way to satisfy them that if it doesn't become as Ned said, you're not going to be impacted? You've said, you're not going to be impacted. You're our representative. You know, effectively, when you say they're not going to be impacted, we're relying on you. So the board is saying, you're not going to be impacted. Sean Redden said so. You know, honestly, that's ultimately what we're saying.
And I put, I mean, I would, I spend a lot of time and energy putting my opinions on paper. So all of my positions are backed up in writing in the documents that I've submitted. So, you know, to the extent that you care, if looked at that and look at it a little bit, I try to be as sort of layperson-friendly too, but there are very intuitive things that I apply usually first. If it doesn't make sense, it doesn't, I don't care what the numbers say, it's still got to make sense. And making sense to me is a little bit different than making sense to you and others because of my training. So, you know, things that I understand and comprehend, you might not. But make no mistake about it, I'm not looking at this in a very sort of minute way and making an assessment based on a calculation. My first assessment is, you know, starting with, where's the water going to go? Okay. My first instinct is, okay, where does it go downhill? That's where my focus is, at least initially. Because I know everybody uphill is not likely going to be affected by anything stormwater-related. So I'm focusing 95% of my energy on what's going to happen downhill because I just know from training, that's where the energy goes, that's where the water goes, that's where the impact goes.
So I have a question about, you know, on the building side, there's something called commissioning?
Yep.
Where you make sure that what was designed is actually performing the way, to the level of what it was designed. Is there something comparable in stormwater where you verify, once it's built, that it's functioning the way it was intended to function? And part of it's inspection during construction, I imagine.
Yep.
But is there anything like a post-occupancy evaluation, again, on the building side, where you go back and evaluate, you know, how well it's working? Is there something like that on the stormwater side that gets, can be put in place?
So with the Conservation Commission's order of conditions and with DEP's superseding order, if it happens, there's a requirement for a final as-built and a certification by the design engineer that it was built substantially in compliance with the plans. That being said, there's all varying degrees of how much, how serious people take that certification. It is not atypical to have a pre-occupancy inspection. We, for most of our projects for towns that we review, we get, there's certain steps along the installation of the stormwater system that we want to see. We want to see the bottom of an excavation for an infiltration system because we want to make sure that the bottom conditions that we thought we were going to have, by virtue of a couple test pits, right, exist throughout the whole bottom. If it doesn't, then we can reassess. And then we want to make sure the system gets installed the way it was supposed to be installed. We inspect when the system's done. Then we look for an as-built plan that documents all the inverts and all the elevations that they need to hit to make sure they're complying with offsets to groundwater, things like that. That usually comes at the end.
So this, when you're talking about being a design engineer, you're confirming these things?
Nope. This is when we're reviewing on behalf of another municipality.
Okay. So in this scenario, then, you could be, it could be a requirement that you be engaged or a peer review engineer be engaged to monitor these things during construction?
Sure.
That's good to know. And then, the importance of that, just from my experience on the board too, is we did have a situation where during construction, there was a lot of runoff from construction. And this, it was thought that the stormwater system was functioning, but it wasn't functioning properly. And it had to do with the construction management side of it. So I do think it's important to make sure, to have those inspections.
And to Sean's point, fundamentally different animals, managing stormwater during construction and post sort of development.
But you'll never have post that works properly if you haven't verified it during construction.
Correct.
And I know on the building side, you get building inspectors. But on the site side, do you get building inspectors? No. So this is, this is where I think it's important in terms of that assurance, the extra level of assurance.
And they also said an annual evaluation of the systems is correct. Didn't we talk about that?
As part of, again, as part of compliance with the stormwater standards, there's a whole section on a long-term operation and maintenance plan. So the standards recognize that, well, you could spend all this money and build all these systems. If they're not maintained properly, then they're not going to work. So there are requirements within that for an annual maintenance program.
So there's an annual maintenance program, but what if the applicant does not maintain it? What if it's not followed through? How is...
Yeah. That's, that's sort of where the rubber hits the road.
An added requirement that we should be asking?
Um...
Because if they are not compliant with that...
They'd be liable for damage at that point if they let their system fail and something happens, right?
Yeah.
A fine could be imposed at that point if it's not, if they haven't filed their report, they could be subject to a fine.
Or if there's damage to another property because of the runoff, because it wasn't maintained, they'd be liable. So that would motivate them to make...
Yeah. And frankly, you look to the type of people you're working with and what's their track history and what's the rest of their facility look like? Like, not to be sort of dismissive of contractors, but if I see a contractor's yard with heavy equipment and stuff everywhere, and I'm going to think differently about their sort of, my bias as to whether they're maintaining their stormwater system as opposed to a meticulously manicured sort of facility, right? So nothing in my experience suggests that this is an applicant that is not likely to maintain their system, as long as it's documented properly and designed properly, which, in my opinion, it has been. But that being said, there's always more you can do. I mean, I think one of the most successful places I've experienced is this town of Marlborough actually requires a compliance report every year, stamped by a professional engineer. So we, as engineers, have skinned the game because we're certifying and putting our stamp on a report that says this particular property owner did what was required under the, under their operation and maintenance plan. And it also includes a section where it's, if we identify areas that are not functioning properly, we identify them and suggest mitigation. So that all goes into a report. The report gets submitted to Conservation Commission in Marlborough, and then it's kind of just a check on the, and really, it's more about just making sure people pay attention. Because a lot of it's not that you didn't do it right, it's that you didn't do it at all, right? And if you're trying, then usually you're getting most of it right. It's the ones where there's nobody watching, nobody doing anything, and nobody maintaining anything. And the first thing you realize is that five years from now, when your parking lot's flooding, everybody wants to know what's, what happened.
The greatest risk in the, in the events that need to take place for the highest level of success, the greatest risk is compliance during construction. And they'll reach a point in time where the design is, DEP's going to have an opinion. And at that point in time, their opinion is, you said it earlier, it's going to matter. And if they...
Exclusively.
Exclusively. And if they request design changes, those design changes are going to take place. So the next step is building a project consistent with the design. And the greatest risk is that the site contract during construction deviates from the design in whatever way. Maybe it's the soils improper. There are numerous ways where they could have deviations. So, you know, as we consider what our position is, we probably would have an expectation that there would be a geotechnical consultant involved in the project during all of the earthwork, you know, which would include, you know, all of the subsurface drainage systems to make sure that as it was being built, this is not uncommon. This happens all the time on projects. We see geotecs all the time on projects, to make sure that as it's being built, it's being built in compliance with the design. That, I think, is something that's necessary in order to get the highest, the most likely successful project. Because really, what you're saying is, you know, you're comfortable the design is going to meet stormwater, Massachusetts stormwater management practices.
Yep.
And what's going to back you up is going to be DEP, you know, agreeing with you or saying, Sean, I think a couple more changes here would be necessary for it to happen. Then after that, it's a matter of making it come to life, building it properly.
I mean, I don't know if DEP's going to care what I think. They're going to reach their own conclusions. But, yeah, I mean, to your point, if DEP approves the design and it gets built according to design, I think, then all indications are that everything's going to be fine, as long as it gets maintained the right way.
For the neighbors, that at some point, there's going to be a conclusion, you know, to this, to this application. But, you know, for the neighbors, if the conclusion is that the project moves forward, I think they deserve, you know, a, and this would be upon the applicant to make sure that the right oversight exists on the project, Ned, to make sure that they can feel confident that it was built properly. Because at some point, there's going to be a determination, as I said, that it's designed properly. So the next step is, how do we make sure it's built properly? Because at the end of it, you, and your applicant, don't want any doubt that at least those two things have been done properly.
Absolutely.
Well, I think from the, our perspective, if, you know, the condition of having an independent peer review engineer inspecting it during construction is a higher level of independence on the inspection is a way to go, rather than, standard, you know, would be that the design team inspects the work of the contractor during construction. But, you know, this would give another level of independence, which I think would be pretty valuable in this, particularly for the stormwater. I'm not suggesting it for the architectural, the, you know, the rest of the building construction. But for this particular piece of it.
Yeah. I think it's appropriate. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, you know, the other person that's at risk is the civil engineer that designs it. You know, I mean, his stamp's on the line too. So I think if you have who you're referring to as an independent, you know, and the engineer is going to want to make sure too, that he's protected. So I think, I think even the engineer would appreciate the fact that there's an independent with oversight over the contractor.
I mean, I think it's really for, as you said, for the board and for the neighbors, for the independents, because there might be some question about the independence of the design team or the, you know, proponent team. As a professional myself, I mean, you know, just as Sean has said, when you have your stamp on the line, you know, you take that responsibility seriously. take that responsibility seriously. You don't, you know, put that at risk for one client. So, but I do think for, you know, in this particular case, you know, putting that as a condition when-
And I don't, I don't, sorry, but I don't, and I don't think it needs to be sort of like an onerous oversight role. I mean, I probably, my staff would probably spend fewer days than I've spent in public hearings, just because there's, there's that few sort of critical moments that we need to see.
Well, typically like on a, when you have to have certain kinds of testing done, you know, the engineer will outline what, what scenarios they need to be there for testing. So it would be the same thing. You would, you would provide that to us in terms of what your recommendation would be, in terms of when the inspections, my sense is it would be stages of construction, not necessarily time of month or et cetera.
And we probably have something written up like that already from our municipal staff, so.
That would be great if you, I was just, was going to say if you could circulate some of those conditions that you would recommend as our consultant. Bonding, whether it's a percentage of the project, I don't know how that's normally calculated, but-
Are we talking about bonding for the condition?
Well, bonding of construction, yes. We haven't really answered the water, but I think we've, we've discussed how we will monitor that, the construction on that. So both, I think, are important.
You can do that.
Sean, one question. With regard to the pavement system, is there any porous pavement in the design?
None. And, and I, that's appropriate. Porous pavement in the Northeast is, in my opinion, is, is sort of a pipe dream and a, just selling an image, because it just ends up becoming impervious over time anyway. So I think what they've designed here is appropriate. You know, I mean, the only situation I'd consider otherwise is, you know, if you have open pavers for patios or things like that, that's, that's porous pavement as well, but not the asphalt. I wouldn't consider doing that.
Yeah. I mean, a contractor's opinion, which I have, is probably not a lot different than yours. The problem isn't whether it's successful or not, it's whether people maintain it. You know, and the idea is that the porosity of it becomes, becomes filled with, with, you know, so, but, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't some portions of porous pavement improve the design? You said earlier that typically your, your impervious area is what drives the, the stormwater management, right?
Yep.
So, you know, one way to create more drainage is to create, you know, some form of porosity which, of the pavement surfaces, which would give you more infiltration than you're required.
One of my biggest concerns and why I typically won't use porous pavement in my designs is because we do a lot to trap the crap and crud that comes off of cars, the oils, the sand, the salt. That's all stuff that in porous pavement applications goes directly into the ground and into the groundwater. So we bypass the water quality units, we bypass the isolator rows. So we're not getting that, that treatment of the various things that are bad and runoff. You're not getting the runoff, right? So nobody thinks about, it's sort of like out of sight, out of mound at that point. But to me, it's like, no, I don't, my original training was in 21E stuff, the hazardous waste stuff, and like, like pathways to contamination. It's like, well, why would I spend all this time and energy treating the water that comes off of pavement, but then design a pavement system that lets it go right through? To me, that's a bit counterintuitive. So I've always struggled with that. So you'll, you'll very, you'll only see me put a porous pavement section on a design if I'm, if I'm made to do so.
Yeah. I'll keep that in mind.
So there is an option, right?
No, I'm, I'm asking it, and I'm having the conversation in a serious way because, you know, that, this has been described as not a heavy traffic site. So I understand, you know, the concerns with, you know, fluids, gas, oil that emit from vehicles. But if this is a low-traffic site and it could provide a little belt and suspenders, I just, I'm going to think a little bit about it. Yeah.
Maybe that upper parking lot, which is going to have less use.
That's exactly where I am. Yeah, the upper parking lot. You know, when you get up to there, that's not intended to be heavy traffic. And, you know, we'd expect the applicant to maintain it. You know, it might provide the neighbors a little bit more comfort, you know? So it's just something to think about. It's a little bit more expensive, Ned, but it's not a lot, it's not a lot more expensive and it's not a big enough area, you know?
We'll certainly take a look at it. I was at Mastod 25 years ago when the whole issue of porous pavement came into effect. And we thought this is the greatest thing since sliced bread until the second winter when flowers just chewed it up completely and I had to tear it all up and replace it. It's a maintenance nightmare for a lot of different reasons, but it's certainly, you know, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
So, all right, I think we should move on to-
Yeah, so, back to the whole process, you know, maybe I should have talked about it at the beginning, but not only did I revisit the, the town meeting twice, I watched all the Conservation Commission meetings on this too. And I was a little surprised that I totaled up the number of hours that the Conservation Commission spent on this project. Because I know how many hours we have spent on this project. And I believe they've only spent about five hours in this whole process. And I think that, you know, my understanding is that usually our local order of conditions is more strict than DEPs and that if, when the DEP will issue superseding order of conditions, because it benefits the applicant more than it actually protects the neighbors. And I sort of feel like, after watching all five hours of conservation, I, they did not ever discuss bringing in 12,000 cubic yards of fill, which Meredith mentioned. They quoted as, and I know, you know, you don't think a hydrologist is super important, but they quoted, the chair of the Conservation Commission quoted that there will be a certified hydrologist from Tetra Tech, and he mentioned a name, to be retained to answer the questions on mounding in vernal pools. So it was stated at CONCOM on May 16, 2023, that a certified hydrologist would, would be retained. So I sort of feel like sympathy with the neighbors because they didn't get the chance. I like to verify information and, you know, the neighbors seem to be very trustworthy. But I wanted to go back and confirm what they said. And they're, they're right. On the September 12, 2023 meeting, they did take a vote. And they didn't let the neighbors speak. They didn't have their consultants speak. And they've, they have put out a lot of money for this. And as a board, not to allow a neighbor's consultants to speak, I think that's awful. And that's not a good precedent. I don't think that we as our board would want. I feel like if neighbors have spent money out of their own pocket, their consultants should be able to come and speak. And even if that means extending it one more month, one more meeting. So I kind of feel like CONCOM, you know, didn't, they failed. I think they failed the neighbors. And, and whatever happens, I feel like all of this kind of lies at the feet of CONCOM. And we're, we're trying to mitigate CONCOM's lack of process. And I think that's kind of unfair. But I feel for the neighbors. I really do because they have put out a lot of money. And everyone is just relying on DEP. But I'm a little bit of afraid that we didn't put in our more strict conditions. Don't we have more strict conditions?
Oh, you absolutely do. So the 25-foot no disturb zone is completely a local requirement.
Right. So that's why DEP is going to issue their superseding order of conditions and not take into account our local conditions.
That's subject to the appeal at Superior Court.
Right.
Yeah. So, and I think it's unfortunate the neighbors have to do that when we could have handled it at a board.
Can I ask, oh, sorry, that's, no, I agree. Which, and there have been some changes, and I spoke briefly to John Kirin and told Ned, there have been changes. How often, if you, if there was information not provided to the Conservation Commission, like the amount of cut or the amount of fill, let's just say, brought into the site, would we make our condition subject to a final determination by the Conservation Commission? Because-
Well, as, as it relates to their purview of review, so keep in mind that the Conservation Commission is only empowered to review things within their jurisdiction. And their jurisdiction is defined as a function of where the wetland boundaries are and-
So they, they sometimes, they don't have the ability to review the building. They can't comment. That's not within their jurisdiction. They don't, they're-
Or the impact to the soil, I guess, or bringing, you know, because they do comment when, when we have 40B projects, 646 Canton Ave, for example, you know, huge amounts of fill that are brought in. They do comment on that.
Right. And, but in a very specific subject areas, so is, will the placement of that fill result in an impact to the resource area? So not whether, whether that, not whether that fill is appropriate or-
Right.
Or required.
But will it impact the wetlands?
Yeah. Only will it, in the placement of it, how do you adequately keep it from running off into the wetlands and filling the wetlands?
So could we ask that they, you know, that this be subject to final review by the Conservation Commission and their review of the construction management plan? Would that be appropriate?
Well, they've, they've done that and they've issued their order. So I don't know-
If they would change anything based on any changes to the, and it's gotten smaller.
No, it's going to be, DEP will make the, the final determination. And that'll be the determination. And we'll be required to comply with the, with the determinations of DEP. Not going back, it won't go back to the CONCOM.
What about construction management?
They don't have jurisdiction over construction management. They have jurisdiction over operations and maintenance of the stormwater management systems.
In, in construction management, only as it, as it relates to work within jurisdictional areas. So here in the area, buffer zone. So with an eye, the way the Wetlands Protection Act is framed is you've got all these different things we call resource areas, which are areas that are subject to protection. The wetlands, the rivers, the vernal pools, things like that. So those are the areas that we're trying to protect. Around them, they establish these things called buffer zones, which is, okay, if work is going to happen within these areas, right? These aren't areas that are regulated, right? It's, if work is going to happen in there, there's a presumption that there's a potential risk that something bad could happen to the areas that we're trying to protect. So what the local commission does is they say, okay, well, anything that's work within that buffer zone is work that we have a right to tell you how we want it done, so that it's done in a manner that protects the resource area.
And they have done that. Do you remind that? Okay.
So I thought Tom Palmer at their last meeting specifically said, number one, he said, hope there'll be cooperation between the neighbor and the developer. And he said, there'll be a condition for additional plantings along Highland Street. And the plantings are in CONCOM jurisdiction. And the applicant will have to go back to CONCOM to review the plantings plan because CONCOM did not take, did not talk about the landscape plan.
Right. It's very common for a landscape plan to, for the submission of a landscape-
Yeah. That was the other landscape plan I was looking for. Yeah.
Hi, Jesse Alderman, Foley-Hawke again. It's incredibly common for a landscaping plan, for a planting plan to be, for the submission of a landscaping plan to be a condition of an order of conditions to be approved either by the conservation agent, or typically the conservation agent, but in some cases, I suppose, the full board. Just as you'll likely, if, if condition a special permit here on DEP and the CONCOM and/or the CONCOM's further determination of compliance with the state's stormwater standards. So a landscaping plan is something that often comes after the approval of the order of condition.
But it would go back.
And it might even too, that they might have recognized that there's, landscaping is clearly within your purview. So, so they would anticipate that changes to what they saw for landscaping plan would be envisioned, that, okay, they, they fully expected that landscape plan or whatever plans that they showed them during Conservation Commission that were likely subject to change as a part of this review.
So in other words, you can build the project, can't put any plantings in until you come back and we approve those. That would be what I, it wasn't council record for that, but that would be what I, that's incredibly, because it's a standard condition in an order of conditions.
So that should be added.
So the tree replacement policy, like, is a requirement in Conservation Commission, is documented in their order of conditions?
I think it is, yeah. We have to provide an inventory of every tree that's removed. And we have to replace on a per caliper, caliper inch basis, all trees removed within the 100 feet of this, within their jurisdiction, which is 100 feet of the wetland. And, you know, they think that, and to the extent that we don't replace them with trees, we're writing a big check for the town for the value of those trees.
I guess my question is, is that in their order of conditions?
Yes.
Because I noticed it was on a tree preservation plan here, the calculation, and which ones were within the wetlands jurisdiction and which ones weren't. So for our purposes, that's informational because it's part of that order of condition?
Yes.
Okay.
And isn't it only four-inch caliper or greater that has to be replaced? Anything less than four-inch isn't taken into consideration?
Right. Anything that's within the jurisdiction that's four-inch caliper or greater, we have to replace on a caliper per caliper basis.
Because trees even less than four-inch caliper have pretty big significance in a landscape, especially in a natural.
There's not, there's very little less than four inches out there because the undergrowth has been stifled by the overgrowth.
And as someone who's permitted hundreds of projects in Massachusetts with dozens and dozens of conservation commissions, your commission is, is very sophisticated. Tom Palmer is very smart. Your, your local bylaws are very much above and beyond what most communities require. I was shocked at the, the amount of financial compensation required and mitigation required for tree removal. I mean, that's, I haven't seen that level of requirement anywhere. The 25-foot no town zone is a fairly common restriction in local bylaws. But the Milton Conservation Commission is very stringent on it, far more stringent than my experience. Most other municipalities, you set it as a target and have, are a little more liberal in granting relief in how it's applied. But your, your commission is very, very, very-
I know. They're very strict on homeowners.
Yeah. With respect to that, Maggie, I think I-
I know. We talked about it.
Maggie, I, Maggie, I addressed this before, but I think it's important to point out. Homeowners don't have the opportunity to mitigate, right? You have a small backyard, you do work within the 25-foot no disturb. You don't have any opportunity to mitigate that impact. This, the commission found that we adequately, we more than adequately mitigated the impacts to the 25-foot no disturb. And therefore, they found it was appropriate to do work within the 25-foot no disturb.
There's one thing I'd add to that.
It's a huge difference.
A lot of, a lot of the impacts to the, to the 25-foot no build zone were from the roadway coming in. And even under the state law, you have this, this thing called limited project. So the principle there is, there's a 5,000-square-foot limit under your, under your Wetlands Protection Act. The town can't issue a permit that alters more than 5,000 square feet. Except, on a limited project basis where you're trying to access the upland part of your site, you're allowed to basically do what you can to cross the wetland, even if it exceeds 5,000 square feet, because you're presumed to have a right to come across that wetland. You have to mitigate for it and you have to make sure you minimize it. But it doesn't count towards your 5,000 square feet. So in this case, most of the reasons that they needed to go within the 25-foot zone was in getting access to the upland portion of their site. I was pretty struck when I first started looking at the project, the, you know, they, clearly Ned heard that they couldn't go within the 25-foot. Because I mean, all their walls could have been much smaller if they went into the 25-foot. But they, they were, they were pretty adamant about maintaining that, that offset. And again, that's not an offset that exists anywhere else other than your local bylaw.
So the additional landscape would be added. So the additional landscape would be added at what point, after the order of, after DEP has ruled, and then it would go back to the Conservation? When would the additional landscape plan be created, I guess?
Any landscaping that goes back to the Conservation Commission, just to be clear, is within their jurisdiction, meaning within 100 feet of a resource area. So otherwise, that's you or somebody else who would approve landscaping. The landscape plan will go back to the Conservation Commission after the superseding order is issued, because superseding order...
I guess what I'm asking is, should we be asking the landscape architect, are we putting that plan together now?
We have it, we filed it.
Along the road in the wetlands?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta talk about that.
With plantings within those wetlands, okay.
Within the buffer zone.
Within the buffer zone.
Some actually in the wetlands, too.
There are some in the wetlands. Okay, so that was acceptable, that was, okay. So that'll go back...
Try to dash, try to clear something up for me real quick. Just stormwater standards. Milton does not have their own, correct?
Milton has their own stormwater bylaw.
Bylaw.
But, as far as the standards that are going to the DEP?
Yep.
As a state.
Milton follows the DEP stormwater standards or their own bylaw?
Both. So, so, think of it this way, the, the standards are, are the heavy lift, the standards are the, are the science, the, the Bible, for lack of a better word. The, the regulations are all the other sort of issues that are sort of, sort of higher level. The standards are the, are the implementing, sort of, sausage making, for lack of a better word, right? So that, that's, that's where everything has to be handled the same way across the board. So the reason the state has a standard is, is so that all the municipalities and everybody within Massachusetts, all us engineers, have a standard to work against. Under no circumstances would I ever want a local municipality to have something different than, than what the state recommends, because you end up having potentially conflicting requirements.
So when this comes back from the DEP, it would, it will be settled by the DEP, and Milton will not have a chance to stick our nose in anywhere, right?
Well, Milton still has a local bylaw that's outside of DEP's review.
But if it's not stricter than DEP?
It is stricter, though.
It is.
Your stormwater bylaw is inapplicable to projects that are under Conservation Commission jurisdiction. Those are, those are, the storm, the state storm law, the, excuse me, the town of Milton general bylaw on stormwater is not applicable to this project.
Well, I think we're referring about their wetlands bylaw.
Your bylaw is, Wetlands Protection Act bylaw is more stringent in several regards than the state, but not on stormwater, you do not have different storm...
Let me ask you about stormwater.
Same stormwater standards.
Now, stormwater bylaw specifically excludes review by DPW of stormwater management systems when they're in the purview of a wetland, and they're under the purview of CONCOM, and they, they hand that, they hand that to the...
He's asking if CONCOM has more stringent stormwater standards.
Not storm...
No, they... I'm just asking, when it comes back from DEP, do we have to touch it, or is it final?
CONCOM?
The stormwater standards.
CONCOM would not be able, just, as the same as you, CONCOM would not be able to make a contrary determination to DEP on compliance with the state's stormwater standards.
We could have, if CONCOM wrote in, it were abided by ours, more strict...
No, it would have to be in the bylaw. It would have had to have been a, a more stringent standard codified in the town bylaw.
Yeah, so the town bylaw for memory care was deficient, because the memory care bylaw doesn't say that the applicant has to meet the wetland protection.
It does, it says that the applicant has to meet the state's stormwater standards.
It actually doesn't have to say it, Maggie, because as a matter of law, we have to comply.
Have to meet it anyway, but it's, it's duplicative, but it also says you have to meet it, it just doesn't have any additional, more stringent standards within it.
Okay. So it's 10 o'clock.
Meredith, we've got Elizabeth Pyle again with her hand up, she's the lawyer for the abutters, I don't know if you want to give her a chance to speak or not?
Yeah. Yes, Elizabeth, that's...
Uh, Elizabeth, oh yeah, yeah, she, she put her hand down and I was back.
Okay.
Elizabeth, can I have a... Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry, I was trying to, and I, I put the hand down, but, so, thanks for letting me speak again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have also about this process. I, I've had my hand up for a while, because I just wanted to correct something that Sean Riordan said earlier, in, in response to a, the question that was asked, will you get a report from DEP from a hydrologist? And the answer to that is, no, DEP doesn't give any reports to town boards from a hydrologist. They may have a hydrologist on staff that would look at it if the reviewing analyst determines that it's necessary, but we're not privy to that information, and that is sort of like a, making the sausage behind the scenes kind of review. So if you're looking for a report from a hydrologist, you won't get one as part of the SOC superseding order of conditions proceedings. So I just wanted to be clear about that. And then, in terms of the Conservation Commission's continuing review here, if there is new information submitted in terms of landscaping, that would need to go back before the Conservation Commission, but the Conservation Commission's review under the local bylaw is done, and they won't provide any more analysis unless something new is submitted, or a plan change that's significant is submitted back to them, or we do have an appeal of that decision to Superior Court. If the court finds that the order was deficient and remands the matter to the commission, that, that could be a potential outcome as well. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have, too, so I want, that you know I'm still here. Thank you.
I would need to correct a record on this hydrologist issue, I'm sorry, but at, first off, DEP, DEP has scientists all over their staff who are going to be looking at this, and the analyst who's looking at this does this for a living, okay? So, but second off, after the superseding order of conditions is issued by DEP, the neighbors will appeal that to what's called the Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution at DEP, and they can put on 100 hydrologists if they want, as experts in that matter. And the final order of conditions, when they appeal that, will not be issued by the Department of Environmental Protection until an administrative law judge in the Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution has heard every scintilla of evidence that the neighbors and the applicants wish to put on. So when they appeal that, the superseding order of conditions to an administrative law judge, there will be Mr. Horsley, Mr. Chesia, every single, and, and God knows who else, will go before the DEP and administrative law judge and get to produce as much evidence as they'd like, okay? So that's just, it's...
That's good for, that's helpful, but, okay. Sorry, but yes, Bard, yes, you want to come?
Hi.
Questions?
Thank you. Very, very quickly, I, I just would like to add a piece of information, because I don't think anyone's reviewed the latest plan, but from, from last night that I saw, the number for the cut, for the fill is 20,000 cubic yards, not 12, it's 20,000, and I believe, you know, as I've understand it, anything within the 100 foot buffer is within the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission. So, you know, because so much of this building and the paved areas are within the 100 foot buffer, that, you know, a vast majority of that fill falls within the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, so, you know, logic would say that they should be looking at that. So, yeah, so I, I wanted to make that point, and I think a lot of us are also concerned that we have a bylaw that requires the Zoning Board of Appeals to look at any new construction that requires 1,000 cubic yards of filler more. This is 20 times more than that, and I'm sure what they'll say, you know, they're probably already whispering to each other about it, "Oh, that's just, that's just one more permit that we'll get, no problem, it's a building code thing," but there's just a lot here that has not been checked off, and they're forcing us to vote, forcing you to vote. So, so I, I don't feel comfortable with that, I don't think the neighbors do, and I also don't think, with all due respect to the, you know, the experts here at this table, who are experts in various matters, some are more genitalists, that, you know, the town should be taking legal advice from the applicant, I feel very uncomfortable with that, and nor legal advice from the, from the civil engineering consultant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Meredith, Nadine Hannah has her hand up again, I don't know if you want to give her a chance to talk?
All right, is it, Nadine? Yes, but you know what, can you be brief, because I think we do need to continue this and have a discussion on that?
It's just brief.
Yep.
I promise. Nadine Hannah Levin Stafford wrote, "I'm just curious how much more money the developer and their team think that the neighbors on Stafford and Highland need to spend to continue keeping them, you know, honest, or to try to make them be honest to begin with. The investment financially that we as a group have already made, thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, have, have resulted in them changing their plan. If their plan had been adhering to all of the requirements all along, they would not have made changes, but they did when we pushed back with our legal counsel, with going to DEP, with not just our efforts and our, and our testimony, but with someone else saying, 'Hey, legally, you're not abiding by X, Y, Z.'" And even right now, this statement that was just made, "Oh, well, once it goes through DEP, the neighbors are going to appeal." How much do you think that's going to cost us? And I'm not saying we won't do it, but how much more money is it going to cost us, the residents of Stafford Road, of Highland, anyone else who wants to contribute, be my guest, versus these developers, their legal counsel, being honest and forthright and, and making an appropriate site, an appropriate building to this site? As, as Maggie said, it should have been, or I believe it was Maggie said, it should have been handled at a board level. That's something that, like, I wish it had happened, it didn't happen, I wish now that we could stop things from snowballing and steamrolling further than they would, but it's just as much as we don't want to be the ones calling in on, you know, the ambulance and the visitors and the, you know, the delivery guys and whatever else, we also are, are now, are assumed a cost burden of protecting our neighborhood, and it is appalling that they so casually, nonchalantly mention, "Oh, well, don't worry, the neighbors are going to appeal that," because that appeal will cost us more. They're so presumptuous, their attitude is atrocious, and they don't belong in our neighborhood. Thank you.
So the question is now, I know we have questions for the architects, I know there's things on lighting we wanted to get to, but I think at this point, we do have some other things on our agenda that we should address. So I would like to ask the board, I feel like we might need an additional meeting, just to focus, just, and get our questions answered on, on this, I think this has been very helpful, thank you, and thank you, Sean. Is next week a possibility to meet? I don't know if, what your schedule is, you answered a lot of the questions, I think, and you'll send us some suggestions for conditions on, basically on what we have discussed. But, next week, are, are people available, I should just say?
I'm around, any night but Wednesday.
Um, any night except for Wednesday, sorry, I'm putting my calendar...
I can only do it virtually.
Virtually is fine.
Meredith, this is East Milton Neighborhood Association, can't get a form Monday 11, so if you can be mindful of that.
That's this, this week?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's, uh...
Yes, that's, so it would be the 15th through the 18th, next week? Thursday, the 18th? Or early, not Wednesday? Tuesday, the 16th? What is your, does anyone have a preference?
I'm free, yeah, I'm free, I'm free.
The, I prefer the 16th?
Yep.
If, if we're looking for preferences.
Maybe earlier, better, just in case we need some...
Yeah, earlier is better.
Okay, so Ned, is that the 16th?
That's, that's fine with us.
So I think, if we could entertain a motion, and, you know, I don't know if you can make it, we're, but, you can look at...
I'm actually going away this weekend, so...
Oh, good, good, okay, good for you.
I think we asked Sean a lot of questions.
I think we did get a lot of those questions.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll do my best to, I'll email Tim some thoughts on, rather not sort of draft on a whole nother letter, but...
Exactly, just, yeah, some bullet points is great. Okay, so with that, um...
Meredith, just, just real quick, so, yeah, the, the 16th is fine, I'm, I'm out of the office, it's a school vacation week next week.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim, that's...
No, 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 no worries, I, I'll, I'll make the meeting, it'll be fine, I just wanted, like, everyone that's listening, if you've got the details, next week's meeting, get them in by Friday, so that I can distribute them to the board. I can't promise that they'll get to the board in time as fast as they come in on Monday or Tuesday, so if you've got anything, get it to me for the big night, please.
Great, thank you. So with that, if I could have a motion to continue the public hearing for 111 Highland Street to April 16th at 7:05.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sean.
Good, thank you, Sean, yeah.
It's kind of nice that people are here, it's a lot more.
Okay, yeah. Talk about your...
People don't care about what I say.
You never knew how many people were interested, thank you.
Thank you.
How many people are so interested in stormwater? Yeah. It's obviously a, a site.
Stretch over there, Sean.
Seventh inning stretch, yeah. Oh, good, good, thank you. Okay. All right, so...
Yeah, we have to get like a stretching segment into this, if you get to the three hour mark, and we've been sitting for three hours, we should...
True, and you were driving, too.
Okay, I'll stand up, Sean.
Does that feel good?
Hey?
Shake the legs out?
I know, get ready for another two hours.
No, well, one, all right.
I always have a feeling time coming in here tonight, so...
Thank you.
All right.
Well, you must sit a lot, too, right? Your work requires you to be seated for a long bit.
Yeah, okay. We'll give it a minute, Julia, you want to go?
I'm stretching under the table.
Good. That's it.
A brief process.
All right, okay.
Cheryl, can I just give you these designs?
Certainly. Oh, yeah, here's one here, too.
Design, okay.
That was the March 7th, was that?
Yeah.
Okay, I...
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yes.
We're gonna, we have, we'll just, like, have to wait for the two, but I just was thinking that we're not likely to finish this entire agenda, so...
No, we'll have to focus on certain, whatever, you know, certain MBTA zoning discussions we want to prioritize, and when we get the board back, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Excellent.
And if we want to discuss the MBTA slope walkway and...
Seventh inning stretch?
Yes. I'm just happy I can raise my arm, I couldn't do it for like a week.
Oh, would you fall or something?
No, I did something in there, but I don't know what it was.
Frozen, frozen shoulder. All right, we're ready to go, okay.
Rock and roll.
All right, so the next item on the, for new business discussion and vote on our planning board member representative for Town Farm Affordable Housing RFP Selection Committee. This is a representative, for those who've been following for the poor farm, the RFP, there's two responses that come, have come back, and this, look, board has, is wanting to put a, sort of, a group together for a review process.
Yeah, I have a question, who, what boards are represented on that committee?
Tim, do you know that answer?
So, I, my, my presumption is, I, I actually don't know for a fact if a member of the Governor's Stone Trustees will be on it, but it's on their behalf. They have requested a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, a member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and then a number of resident abutter representatives on that group.
So how many people total?
Uh, that, that I don't know.
Have they appointed neighborhood abutters that you know of, so far?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
And, so, the Affordable Housing Trust, have they appointed somebody?
Uh, they have, yes.
Just so we, it might be helpful to know what kind of professional background they have, being represented.
So the, the Affordable Housing Trust representative is Tom Callahan, longtime member of the Affordable Housing Trust, he's in the affordable housing finance world.
An MPEC? Yes, Cheryl, so...
We had, we had a meeting last night, so I'm doing it for the, the...
Very good.
So would that be, can we have two board members? I mean, technically, you're on MPEC representing the planning board, so would that be?
I wouldn't do it, I mean, unless no one else wanted to do it from here, but I wouldn't, I would presume someone else would do it from our board here.
I think that's the right way to do it.
Yeah, okay, yeah. The residents, we don't know who they are yet, or their backgrounds.
I thought.
I think I heard mentioned, we all, maybe we don't, our old friend Mike Kelly, who is president of Indian Cliffs, I think he may have been selected.
He's an engineer.
Woodlot Drive has a representative. I believe Maggie Wilson, who's on the board of the homeowners association, was mentioned as a member. I'm not sure exactly what her background is, but you know, she represents that group of homeowners. And then I believe Quisit Brook will have a representative, not sure who that is yet.
When does, when does the review process begin? And how long does it last? Is it?
It's really, I don't have answers to that. I wasn't, this was something Tim alerted me to right before our agenda went for our meeting last night, so I just put it on the agenda without a lot of information, honestly, just to get the person designated. But my understanding is an RFP was developed in, by the Affordable Housing Trust with the assistance of Mass Housing Partnership, under, or with the approval of the trustees of the Governor Stone Trust. And then that RFP was issued, and there were two respondents that have been deemed responsive, like, so they meet the requirements, and that the task is to review those. And I presume judge them against the RFP.
Yeah.
Right, how responsive they are to the RFP, and see which one's most favorable.
Yeah, Tim sent those to us. I've already looked at them, so I assume that process begins soon. The only reason I ask is my next three to six months, I don't have much bandwidth not to do, not to do an additional role. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to not be considered for it, because I just don't think I can have enough time to commit to it.
And so then I also, are they just looking at these two RFPs, or are they looking at, you know, other, you know, solutions? I am, you know, I sort of have been following it, but not recently. So I was kind of wondering if like, you know, if the town of Milton should actually be part of the.
Like having Tim.
The discussion, oh, and to purchase it. So not going out to an outside developer, but you know, like, it seems like the state seems to be looking at buying a property and, you know, building housing for itself. And so maybe the town of Milton should sort of look at, you know, purchasing it from the trust.
That level decision, I think, is at the trustee level, not this, not this committee level.
Trustees do want to go in this direction.
They've indicated they want to go in this direction, the trustees, so I think it's really the next step in the process. So they've already had process, you know, to get to drafting an RFP, to issuing an RFP. That's my understanding.
And I should also add, the Historical Commission does have a representative, and that is Steve O'Donnell.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I forgot that.
I forgot about it too. You know, I've been involved with that site. If no one else wants to, I would be happy to do that. It's been a really, it's a very unusual site because of the history up there. But also, you know, thinking about the possibility of repurposing buildings, which I believe in doing, I would be happy to do it if other people don't.
Yeah, I nominate Meredith.
Second.
No, if other people don't, Cheryl obviously is already on it.
I heard a second.
All right, it sounds like it's yours, Meredith.
Great, thank you.
All right, should we vote?
Thank you.
Aye.
Want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to nominate Meredith to the Review Committee for the Governor Stone Trust RFP selection process.
Nice job.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And again, as long as I'm still on the board as a planning board representative, we're not to assume anything.
One more reason to get you reelected, we gotta keep you right where you are.
But I would be happy to do it.
We need a full vote. I second.
Sorry, and roll call.
No, roll call, just all in favor.
Aye.
Sorry. I was on the next agenda item already.
Good.
All right, let's, discussion of MBTA slope walkway proposal at 2 Adam Street. So this was a proposal that was really not.
I thought Ned was going to hang around and go over this with us.
Yeah.
I think he pissed him off.
Well, we did have the.
No, Ned had surgery like, not very long ago, so I think he was like nursing that a little bit.
So Tim, do you want to just talk about, a little bit about this site? I know you've had some correspondence where we are. I think it went, it sort of bypassed the planning board, went right to the Concom because of the location with the wetlands. But there's been a history with the permitting of this site by the planning board.
Can I just mention that Ned did send this site plan, which this is that proposed building that Pete Jackson had spoken about? And you can see it's, it's right on the sidewalk. So just, that was one of the questions that I had the last time we spoke about this, because that's, you know, right now, this is be what, I'm sorry, it's just very small here. But that would be where the ramp would be.
Yeah.
So, so just so we bear that in mind after, as we talk about it.
So is this permanent, or just until they get the elevator up and running?
Well, the email that Tim forwarded to us made it seem like it was temporary, but if you look at the details of the construction, I don't think the T does things in a temporary way that way, so, I mean.
Well, temporary could be 10 years until they get their funding and get the T project going, right? So maybe they want to make it heavy duty for 10 years?
I would consider, yeah. Oh, Tim, why don't you talk about it a little bit?
Yeah, so I think everyone is familiar with the condition of access to Milton Station. The stairway hasn't been there for many, many years. We very famously, you know, took the T to court over the condition and the absence of that stairway. So the only way to get to Milton Station is to, you know, walk, you know, through the parking lot of extra space storage, you know, across the greenway trail, across the train tracks to get to station platform. There is an easement for public access across that parking lot, but it's, you know, it's never ideal to send people through a private parking lot to get to the train station. Or, you know, you go down Wharf Street, you know, through Wharf Park, through the T parking lot. So, you know, a solution to get people, you know, down to Milton Station on a dedicated, separate kind of, you know, safe piece of access has been something that I think everyone has been interested in for a long time. The T as, you know, I don't know how much of an ironclad, written-down policy it is, but you know, I've heard from engineers at the T, they're not doing staircases anymore. You know, when they have an opportunity to take a staircase out of commission and replace it with elevators or ramps, they do it. If staircases are in bad condition, as they were in Milton, they will not replace them, they will look for another solution. And so this slope walkway is sort of the other solution that they were able to come to, given, you know, the geography and the land use around Milton Station. And so, you know, I sent along the plans. It basically sort of, you know, hugs the sidewalk on the extra space side of Adam Street, gets down to that parking lot and kind of leads you over to that entrance, you know, still, you know, to the train tracks and the station platform. And then I also passed along the email that I got from one of the project managers at the T. You know, basically, I had raised the concern that, you know, a lot of folks in town, you know, we have a, you know, previously permitted project here, they're zoning for a particular type of project on this site. You know, folks are concerned about, you know, whether or not this precludes, you know, that being a development site. And, you know, what the T's contention is, is that, you know, they only took as much as they needed, they didn't take more than they needed to get this slope walkway in, and that, you know, in the immediate term, the operations of the extra space lot won't be affected. And then, you know, in the long term, you know, they still think that it could, you know, be a viable development site, although obviously, you know, if previous development , right, the sidewalk, there would have to be a redesign. And then, you know, the second contention they make is that, and, you know, I would disagree slightly with Cheryl, I don't think they characterize it necessarily as temporary, although, I don't know how else you would describe it now that I think about it, but basically that, you know, this is not elaborate, you know, highly kind of elegant mechanized infrastructure. This is, you know, cement and dirt. You know, not to, not to, you know, knock a ramp, but it's not, you know, it's not anything that anyone would feel bad about, you know. If a better thing came along, you know, they're prepared to demolish this, it wouldn't take that much work. Any development, you know, that would be proposed on this site, you know, if it would be prepared to provide the type of access that the T needs for the public to get down to Milton Station, you know, they've indicated every kind of, you know, everything we know from them is that they would work with development to provide that access. You know, there's no sort of, you know, pride of production of this ramp. If there's a better project that needs to go to the sidewalk and still provides access, you know, they'd be perfectly willing to entertain that type of solution.
You know, on the laydown plan, Tim, and on the demo plan, they do refer to it as the permanent access easement.
You know, so.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, so they want to have permanent, and I don't want to get hung up on this like, oh, it's a kind of, you know, a temporary thing, if something better comes along. You know, they've got to build this ramp so that it provides enduring, lasting access to the station. I think the point that they're.
Sorry, Tim.
No, go for it.
No, the question then comes, they said they were going to be putting in an elevator on the Milton side, so is that not going to happen if this is permanent? And does that mean for Milton, you have to walk, you know, much further than you would if the access was also provided on the Milton side? I guess those would be the questions that I have. I definitely think that my request would be that we send a letter that expresses a lot of concern about how permanent this is, and whether it would preclude a development here. And I don't know how, you know, obviously, the extra space storage has agreed to this, you know, and whether extra space would want to change anything in the future, I guess is a question too. But we don't know that extra space will always be the owner of the property. MBTA will always be the long-term leaseholder of this. And then just this other question I had about what their plans are for other access, you know, from the Milton side. And so for example, like, if a development went in here and they put an elevator in that provided access down instead of a ramp, you know, is that something that the T would see in the realm of possibilities in the future? Because if that's the case, then I wouldn't have so much of a problem, but.
You don't know that, yeah.
We don't know that, and we don't, and I don't know what assurance we would have. Not that we have any say whatsoever, but when we're asked by, you know, by the state to zone for multifamily, and we had something, we have zoning in place here actually now, not even MBTA zoning, we have overlay zoning in place here for, that allows for multifamily. And, you know, it just seems like one of the few good sites that have been identified. So it seems a shame to dedicate it so much land to that purpose. That's, and that's kind of what I would maybe want to express.
And the other piece that I would follow up with is, they basically have closed off those stairs. I would want to know what the plan is with the current existing staircase that is a complete eyesore as a gateway entry to our town. There's a jersey barrier, which is sprayed with graffiti. It's really unbelievable that they've just left it in that condition. So I think that should be tied to any approval with this project, that they, they have some sort of a way of, a permanent solution to that closing off of that staircase that's safe and.
We don't have any approval jurisdiction though, right, Meredith? But I think we can express our.
Well, I don't know, Tim. Do we have?
Thank you.
How, what is the level of involvement, I guess, our town has had?
There's nothing for the planning board on this.
I think we just wanted to raise it as, could we send a comment letter?
Yeah, because we should be able to comment on a jersey barrier sitting on our sidewalks in our town.
I mean, you can comment whenever you want. It's just there's no, I mean, you can't, there's no approval for anything, you know, related to that. But you can certainly, you can certainly express that to the T. That's definitely something that you can do.
So would it make any larger difference if the select board were included in a letter versus the planning board? And I'm just saying, like, you know, what's the, what would get the most attention from the MBTA? If it's sort of, you know, jointly the elected bodies in the town?
I think just for us would be better.
Sometimes, we've had joint letters, years ago, when the MBTA was first talking about doing buses or something else, we had joint letter from the select board.
Isn't the select board still suing them over the stairs?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's over.
We tossed it?
We lost that lawsuit.
We lost it, okay. I think the planning board could handle this one, just because.
It's just whatever is the most effective.
Whatever you guys want to do, it doesn't.
And just to get back to the earlier question, I brought up the last public presentation that we got from the T on the Matt Paul Transportation Project. The slope walkway from Adam Street to the station is listed as an early action item, which is, you know, again, a relatively quick thing, what they could do to make improvements. The actual redesign of the station does include an elevator, you know, relatively proximate to where that stairwell is. So Meredith, I'm kind of wondering if, you know, in the same vein as, you know, they let the stairwell sit there forever, I don't know exactly how much they would invest in making a change there if they know that that's just going to be where the elevator is going to go.
Why can't they just put a little railing there that matches something that they're doing?
I think you're absolutely right, that it shouldn't be the type of site for the next however long. I just, you know, I think.
Tim, you're faded out there, is your microphone?
Yeah, my microphone is junk, sorry. I'm way in front of the keyboard now. I think you're well within your rights to kind of make the ask, I think it's the right ask to make. I just, I think that, you know, they're going to be putting an elevator there, that's their plan.
And I feel like their landscape plan is not a significant landscape plan. You know, it's just perennials and shrubs, so it's not like they're.
Probably one done by an engineer like my pet peeve, right?
They're not like, you know, putting in trees, you know, they're all, it's all plants that.
Well, hopefully it's.
Could be disposable if they go with something else. But my bigger question is on the email. It said that they've left ample room to operate, you know, a 24-foot box truck. So I'm not sure if that should be the standard to use. I feel like, you know, we've talked about it numerous times, that that size truck is sort of becoming a little bit obsolete, because there are fewer, you know, truck drivers and just the way that that industry is going, it's going to be using bigger trucks, and if it is extra space storage, do they have, they must have bigger moving trucks or.
Actually, see people, I'm a member of that gym, and I look out that window at times, and I rarely see trucks there, I see cars there mostly.
Presidential, yeah, that's most of the storage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they might have used a 24, they might have used a big box truck just to prove that anybody could get in here, anybody that goes in there, you know.
Yeah, and Maggie, that's ultimately an issue between, you know, the owner of the T.
So one thing I, another question is like, they have, this is a slope walkway, not as a handicap ramp, and yet the railings that they show are the handicap ramp required type of railing, so, I mean, aesthetically, they're not the most attractive. Not that they're going to change for us, but if we're going to make comments.
I think the question that we've, you've all said it earlier, you know, is it, is it temporary or is it permanent? And if it is temporary, how long is it anticipated to be? And if it is temporary, how long is it anticipated to be temporary for?
Is it only until the elevator goes in?
Right.
I mean, I see that it's desirable from Dorchester to have access without having to come all the way across the bridge. It's kind of like going out of your way. But if a new development here could provide an alternative access, then this would be fine. I just wouldn't want it to be a permanent thing that wouldn't allow a building coming to the sidewalk because that.
I agree.
I have a suggestion. This gentleman, A.J. Tanner, the senior project manager, would it be possible to invite him to come to a Zoom, on Zoom, and meet with the planning board and just discuss?
And if that's not a possibility, I think, you know, you and Tim meeting with him would be fine too during the daytime hours.
Because I feel like letters are lost in that, you know, you send it into MBTA and it's, you know, we don't hear back. It might be just nice just to have a conversation where some of these things could be just knocked out and addressed. If we could get just a meeting or I would think.
I can, I'll make the ask and I'll, you know, what comes up.
And I can, you know, meet separately and get the questions from our board that we would have.
Yeah, I just want to read this last paragraph because I, you know, I didn't read this earlier. It says also, this is from A.J. Tanner, "Also, the access path has been designed as a slab-on-grade structure without any foundations. This design ensures that the path can be easily demolished and rerouted if necessary. Should there be interest in the future development projects that require rerouting the walkway, the MBTA would be open to working with the developer to do so." So, I mean, he's acknowledging in his email that they don't want to get in the way of a development project. So, that's pretty cool anyhow, for what that's worth.
Yeah, that would be helpful just to have some.
So then maybe just to follow up with, is there intent for this to stay once the elevator is in place if no development's going here? And then maybe some kind of a railing instead of a jersey barricade? And if there's some way to document what he has in that email, so it's a letter from them, that it can be in our files? So in the future, we could refer back to it?
A.J. Tanner's not there. Go back.
Yeah, I guess ultimately, this is an easement between extra space storage and the MBTA. I mean, they'd need to remove the easement, you know what I mean? That agreement would, so. Extra space storage would have to be a party to whatever would happen later, right?
The property owner, yeah.
And if it's a development site that they're wanting, I would think that they would.
They haven't had a lot of interest since that project 20 years ago was approved. My understanding has been a few interested parties have tried to come to an agreement with them, but they haven't come to an agreement. But, you know, conditions could change.
Yeah, I mean, they're a publicly held company. Ned's their local representative. So, you know, we could certainly ask him the next time we see him.
Okay, so Tim, you can just let us know when you hear back. That would be great on possibly getting a meeting together. Okay, so it is 20 till 11 now. Couple of the things that I think that we should focus on this list. Survey, beginning some public outreach. I don't know if people have had a chance to look at. And I think giving a sense of timeline, although we won't have a specific, I think, a detailed timeline until we have our consultant on board. Tim, what is, do we have any updates on the RFP? Any responses?
No, everyone that I sent it to expressed an interest in at least looking at it. I think I set the due date for, I think it was Monday, the 22nd. I knew that I wanted to be, to give enough time to get the responses in, but also to be before the late April meeting. So that may be something where, you know, you folks may need to look at that stuff a little bit on the fly for our meeting on the 20, we're meeting on the 24th. Is that right?
Okay.
So I'll get those to you as soon as they come in to me and we can have a conversation.
And do we want to give Tim some guidance on sort of, or would we like to hear from Tim on how he thinks, given the timeline? I think we talked about possible town meeting dates. What we, you know, obviously, the litigation is going on and we won't, we won't know anything until late September, early October. It sounds like when the hearings are. So then we could have our plans in place, but we wouldn't want to schedule a town meeting before that timeframe. So I'm thinking the earliest would be late October, early November, that we could have a fall town meeting.
Is that what the, did you find out what the select board's plans are, Tim, by chance?
Late September, early October is the best I could get.
From them, okay. For the hearings or for a special town meeting?
For a special town meeting.
Because I understand they're planning a special town meeting, not just for this, but for other purposes. So that the, I think one related to the school building project. And I don't know if there's other things, but.
Well, I would think, why wouldn't they schedule it later for after the, you know, the decisions is made? That's, I feel like September is a little bit premature. Then are we going to have another special town meeting later on?
I haven't watched their discussions. I just have heard that about the date.
I would, Tim, I would maybe go back and let them know that we prefer a later fall, that September doesn't seem to.
Well, you know, I think we just want an SJC decision before we're submitting an article.
I mean, really, what's been said is that oral arguments are scheduled for October.
That's what I thought.
How could you have? I mean, it just makes sense that you need to hear and, you know, get through the oral arguments, find out what the decision is.
I think we, what we had talked about was developing zoning, that the scope with the consultant anyway is 25% rapid transit classification and then 10% adjacent community classification. And so I think we just proceed with that and, you know, gives ample time to. I don't think we should delay because if we have ample time to work on further design standards or further design guidelines that are within what we think, I mean.
I agree that we should, not to delay. We won't delay anything, but we're looking at where does our timeline to back it up? And, you know.
Because even if, you know, if they say that MBTA zoning is not legal, I still think that we have great opportunity in town in some locations to create some zoning that would help, you know, with our affordability, our SHI. So I think working on a 10% plan we should start on. And, you know, as I said before, identify, we've, we all know there are great spots in town that could, that would be ripe for multifamily zoning. So I think we start looking at those.
So the question, do we need a little bit more information before we put our timeline together? Or do we want to rough that out now?
Well, the RFP, Tim, did you say the response comes back on, is it the 22nd?
I think I put the 22nd. Let me double check on that.
So that we would have it for our 24th meeting?
So the question, I guess, if we said, what are the steps that we think we need to take and can help back into a timeline? Because if we, you know, community engagement, it's a piece of it. The scorecard, as I called it, or the guiding principles, as Tim called it before, kind of what our criteria, selection criteria is going to be. I took a stab at a survey which kind of ties to those scorecard items, but also collects a little demographic information because we didn't know. And I think we need to, I was talking with Meredith just before the meeting, we need to add probably here maybe precincts. Because one of the things we want to know, are we getting, are we reaching, you know, all sectors or all parts of Milton? Because we want to make sure we are. And if the survey's not, and if we're not getting people at meetings, then we can sort of think about how to do further outreach. I think it's just, you know, it's important. We heard pretty loudly from some parts of town, but not, you know, so much from others. And I think it's important to try and reach now that we have this time, this additional time to do it. So that's why the demographic information's included.
Is our current survey back up right now? The one that, the previous survey that we had? I believe it is up on the website?
Yeah, there might be. Let me check. I mean, we haven't been monitoring that since.
Because I do like a lot of the questions that Cheryl. I don't know if others have had a chance to look it over.
I looked at the survey. I guess one of my questions is, is it anonymous?
Yes.
It is anonymous, yeah.
My intent was for it to be anonymous.
Yeah, yeah, I think people would be more apt to fill it out if it is anonymous. Not that they have much to hide, but you just don't know. I mean, especially with all the demographic questions that are there.
It's really to understand who's answering it and who we're not hearing from is really all.
Totally get the value. I mean, I think you'd like to know if it's mostly young people answering it or mostly older people answering. I mean, I.
People with kids or kids or grown or things like that.
Do you own your house? Do you not own your house? All valuable information. I think it's helpful. The second question I had on it is, how do we, how do we get people to fill it out? I mean.
Million dollar question, Sean, right?
I mean, how do you get that broadly, you know? And I know if Josh was here, he would tell me that the sample size of what? What did he tell me the last time?
500. Wasn't only, can we only get like, you know, 500?
You hear when some of the, if you look at some of the planning journals, and Tim can comment on this, but they always, I always have read, you go to where people are. So maybe you go to, somebody goes, or you send an email and ask the representative from neighborhood associations from local, you know, churches or psychologues, et cetera, to at least send it out to their membership and a link to it, just to make people aware. Because people are more aware now. And maybe we ask the Milton Times if they could put a link to it, you know, as a, you know, in an article about what the planning board's doing. Just take it a little bit more aggressively, I guess, if you will.
You know, you guys.
Council on Aging.
Right.
Library.
Do you guys get all the town, I get every town email that goes out.
I don't because I didn't subscribe to it.
There's so much you're missing, Cheryl, so much you're missing. But I mean.
It gives me time to read these other things.
I guess, couldn't it go out, Tim, to everybody on that subscribes to the town, you know, that has their email, you know, receiving? There's got to be a big group of people there.
Yeah, and we, yeah, we've done a number of, you know, MBTA communities announcements, you know, via the news function on the town website. So that gets, that gets good, you know, that gets good coverage.
Tim, do you know how many people are registered, you know, with their email address, you know?
I don't. I can find that out, though.
I think that'd be really helpful, yeah.
I think it is, you know, not that we were sort of, you know, passive about it. I mean, we, you know, we did.
We lost you, Tim.
I was saying, I was saying, you know, we did our best to kind of publicize the survey at every kind of chance that we could. You know, seeing what those efforts yielded. And I think, you know, as members have kind of said in the past, more people are paying attention now. So I think even if we did the same thing that we did the last time, we'd probably get more responses just because we were booked it. But I think there is, you know, maybe a next level of more active, you know, okay, let's go to, you know, I don't want to sign myself up for like handing out hair cards at polling places in a couple of weeks. But, you know, people are going to be walking in and out of Cunningham Hall all day. You know, it could be a good opportunity.
Yeah.
Or just a flyer on the door even, at all the polling places.
You know, we might find, I mean, there could be 5,000 people that receive, you know, what I get, what you can, you too can get too, Cheryl.
There's one for the schools too.
But I'd be surprised if it's not thousands of people that are registered to receive.
Yeah, I think you're probably right.
Yeah, I just think that's a great mechanism, you know?
You're right.
Yeah.
So we'll come up with some ideas.
For the outreach piece, yeah.
Yeah, and talk through them a little bit more. And I'll take a look at kind of, you know, the calendar and see if there's any kind of big stuff coming up.
Can you approach the schools and ask them if we could send, use their email list? Because I know I get stuff from the schools.
Yeah, you know, we've, God, I did, I think it did something for the bike plan, actually. Let me, I'll talk to the superintendent. I don't, I always try to limit that. I don't want to, because I could go to them every week with something, you know, that I want to spread the word about. But I think this is a big deal and I think it's worthwhile. So I'll talk to the town administrator. We'll see if we get the superintendent on the phone. And, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure we can get something in.
Cool. Thank you.
So I don't know if others have had a chance to look at the survey questions?
Yeah.
And if there's anything that people would like to add? I had mentioned, I thought precincts, adding, that was one of our original questions that we had.
Yeah, I think that's a good add.
You know, I'll take another look at it. I didn't look at it for, to add items, but I will and see if there's anything. There's a lot that's there, so.
And it's also interesting to see, based on the original survey, how have you learned about the requirements of the MBTA communities? Because that's how the, you know, those who were paying attention, who did learn, you know.
You could learn some more again about what's working.
Public meeting from the planning department, the Mass Department of Housing. The Milton Times was the biggest, or one of them. Word of mouth, social media, other newspapers. So those are all really good outreach strategies. So maybe, Tim, we could, well, we can talk about it, but add that back in with the precincts, those first two. So I think that's interesting to follow how people are learning.
So maybe we can, you think, I know next week you put primarily the memory care facility, but this could be a pretty short agenda item just to wrap it up and get it going.
Get the survey going.
I agree. I think so. That'd be a good idea.
Good, okay. And that can further our decision on further outreach as well, on our strategy. Okay, so then, Tim, it sounds like we just need to firm up some dates just on what, you know, fall town meeting, fall schedules will be looking like from a town perspective? And really when, when the public hearings, or excuse me, when the SJC decision, when those hearings will be.
One thing I was thinking in terms of early steps is to review the kinds of districts that we have. So like we have districts that are near the trolley. We didn't previously consider districts near the commuter rail. But this districts near the trolley include a lot of single-family homes. So, you know, that lot size, that kind of discussion, I think, you know, maybe just kind of review that again because it was a while ago that we talked about how we set 7,500 square feet. Because I mentioned, and again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail now, but I would like to have a little time to run through some things I've been looking at was how many lots are within that zone actually qualify at 7,500? How many are bigger? And because how many are bigger influences, what our density is there? And then how much density we have to put somewhere else? So these, it's good for us to understand this before we start really even thinking about other districts when we start setting some of these baselines, if you will, understanding a little bit more about that transit area. Because I've been just trying to understand that more. And it wasn't the zone, the net new wasn't what was coming out. And I've done some analysis on that. I'd like to share with the rest of you. So just kind of an early thing, it's just analysis.
We should discuss that before we hire our consultant.
Yeah, maybe we could figure out this next week or the next time.
I can't believe you caught that, but that was a big miss on our consultant's part.
And I thought we could actually start, because that gets even a little bit more complicated when we're getting into the lot sizes. Maybe just start with what we all, what we all agree on, that we sort of, where we were looking at setbacks, looking at by parcels, extra space storage, Milton Hill House.
But one thing I was.
As we go through that area, I think that's sort of an easier place to start with. Go through the criteria. So it's going through districts that were in, included in the article. But I don't know.
One thing I heard through that process was that there was, I think there's a lot of discomfort with big buildings, that people were uncomfortable. So I think if we can think about how we can do smaller buildings, whether it's multiple buildings on a site or taking something where you can have two, two families because it looks similar to your context, is a way to meet the requirement versus just big buildings, you know?
Well, I'm talking about pre-existing already, our multifamily housing, because we have pre-existing multifamily housing, which we can include in our zoning. And we did. That was what sort of, some of the districts that we were looking at. That was what sort of, some of the districts that we were looking at. So I'm thinking some of those, not only extra space storage, that does not have anything currently in it.
I mean, one thing we could review is just to remind people, the zoning that we already have in place. I mean, there's zoning in place for extra space storage and 88 wharf.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what I mean, going through those.
It's already there. It's like rezoning that, if it's not meeting MBTA communities, doesn't really do much for us because the zoning is already in place, right? So I just think that discussion, kind of understanding each of those things is important, even setting a sort of a ground or a baseline understanding. I think it would be valuable, right? So we're going to be zoning mixed-use, it looks like, overlay in East Milton. We already have an overlay, actually three overlays in the Central Ave-Milton Village area. The three of them apply to different parcel minimum sizes. That's how everything got built except Milton Hill House, which went by zoning variance process.
But I think we need to review for residents who are watching the criteria of the districts that are currently in the zoning. That's what I'm, rather than starting off, you know...
No, I agree with what's in the zoning. We should be reviewing and discussing. But I don't think it should just be the ones that already have multifamily, is my point. To Maggie's point earlier, there's some places that could take additional housing and we should talk about those, right? So they don't have multifamily already on them.
Yep, and that's what I think, that's when we would talk about additional districts.
Because if you're talking about just zoning districts that already have housing on them, then you're not changing anything about the zoning that we have already.
No, and it's not. You know, I'm referring to the extra space storage site, looking at, yes, 88 wharf, but looking at some of those areas, Milton Hill House, some that have potential for additional units on them. Like the Milton Hill House, which has a massive parking lot. You know, that could be a location where additional units. But I think we also want to, we also want to take advantage of multifamily housing on transit that already exists as well. So it's a combination of doing both.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, there's a lot of, it seemed to me, what I heard from folks, there's interest in having some distribution, depending upon what the percentages are, to have some distribution that not all, one area receives all of the new zoning. So, you know, thinking about how that could work is something we should consider. We talked about a couple of Randolph Ave districts, the Brushel Road, a couple of different ideas. You know, like, Jim, you've had different science options. I took a look at that residency tool and tested out a couple of locations. And I, to, I think, one of your point that we should talk about some of this before we have the consultant onboard is because we can guide the consultant, you know, right out of the block, you know, instead of, you know, just having sort of an initial meeting and not having something to kind of send them away to start studying. So I don't think we have to wait necessarily for discussions until we have the consultant onboard.
So do you think the residency tool is actually more accurate than the state tool that RKG created?
They're different tools? Like, RKG's a spreadsheet, right? So I, I'm not an expert at these tools. I did attend a webinar that they had for the MAPC head. So the, you know, the thing that you'd want to look at is the criteria. I mean, I looked at the criteria. The criteria made sense to me because it's tied to the MBTA communities. They had, one of their criteria is flood zone, you know? So that was not something I think that's in any of the criteria we looked at before. I think I added that in here after seeing that. But it does, you know, take into consideration how far the parcels are from transit, whether they have other amenities nearby, whether there's like... The same kind of thing as RKG where they were looking at, what's the value of the property? So, you know, how recently was something built? Like, I think to like Tim's point where, if you have a brand-new building like 131 Elliott, you know, that's not likely to have as high a ranking because it's brand-new construction already. But something older, like the old Milton Hill House, had a higher... So you'll see that in the residency tool when you look at those categories. So it does have some, a lot of things built into it, which seems like, yeah, it was right, it's too bad it wasn't available sooner.
I feel like I've lost faith in the RKG state model.
I think they had to do probably something fairly quickly that was, you know, a little easier to do. I think it's pretty complex what the MAPC came up with because it's GIS-based, too. And not just, well, the state compliance model is also GIS-based, but it's not so visual to the, to us as users because it exports things out into a spreadsheet and so forth. It didn't seem quite as...
Years ago, friendly.
Exactly.
For Tuesday, can we also fit in a discussion of the guiding principles? Where are we doing that tonight? There's a few things I'd like to talk about.
Yeah, I think, let's save that when we're, we can probably put that in. With Tuesday, that's good. Yeah, we can address that because I think that is...
I think the, should we also? I mean, I said I mentioned the survey was kind of tied to the guiding principles. Should we post the guiding principles and ask public comment on this?
Well, you know, I had a few comments on it. If we could wait till Tuesday, I'd rather at least, you know, throw out my questions and my suggestions, but...
But I'm talking about as a final document? Should we seek public, once we're ready for it?
Sure, I think it's...
Yeah, we can put those on the website.
I mean, I think the transparency will be helpful. It'd be good for people to see what the guiding principles, and you've done a lot of work on this, so credit to you for putting it together. But no, I think it's the right thing to do.
Well, it's based on Tim's guiding principles to start with some things that we learned over time, so...
Right, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I only have, you know, four suggestions, so. But if we can fit that in on Tuesday, I'd...
Yeah, I think that sounds great. So we'll revisit that survey and we'll focus our survey because we want to get that out earlier. So surveying guiding principles for Tuesday.
Yeah, we could get both of those done. Those won't take long. Well, the guiding principles could take some time, but the survey, we should be able to get through pretty quickly.
We're not going to fill out the guiding principles. That's going to be the harder part. But just agreeing on what the items are, I think. We should be able to get done, I hope.
Yep. I think that's good. Tim, anything else you would like to add? Does that sound?
Nope.
Okay.
That'll do it. And Meredith, I'll set the draft agenda to you for your thumbs up for the next day or so.
That would be great, so we can get that. It is tight, so.
Tim, can I ask a question? Not related to any of our agenda, but do you have now a recruiting process in place to replace Josh?
We have gotten a number of applications. I'm actually sitting down with the town administrator and the agent director tomorrow to take a look at them